Seeing the presence of a quorum, I call to order this session of the Amherst Pelham Regional School Committee. Our first order of business is to enter into executive session. In accordance with open meeting law, Mass. General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A pursuant to Purpose 2, in our collective bargaining sessions with APAA, and Purpose 3 to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, Hootstein, because the Chair finds that an open meeting may have detrimental effect on litigation position of the committee, and the Chair does so find, and moves the motion. Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. This is a roll call vote. We'll start down on that end.
Katsonson, aye.
Sullivan, aye.
Demling, aye.
Spitzer, aye.
McDonald, aye.
Nakajima, aye.
Gosensky, aye.
We are therefore now in executive session. We will return to the meeting at the reclusion of the executive session.
All right, so I'm going to return the regional meeting back to order, it's like 7:23 or so. For those of you in the public, the reason I'm calling the committee back to order is that the first item of business in the open session is to reorganize the regional school committee. This occurs when there's been elections in the towns, and at this point, all four towns have had their elections, and have had committee meetings since then to appoint members, and so we have Ms. Katsonson, who's a new member to the region with us tonight, and my only role will be to officiate the election of a regional school committee chair, and I'll be then gladly hand the placard and the gavel over to whoever that might be. So, do we have any nominations for Chair of the regional committee?
I'll nominate Eric Nakajima as Chair.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Would you be amenable to that?
Sure.
Any other nominations for Chair? Seeing none, all those in favor of Mr. Nakajima becoming the regional chair, say aye, or reject.
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstentions?
I guess I'm abstaining.
Okay. Well, congratulations.
Thank you. Right, what else are we doing? We're doing a vice chair. And a secretary or no?
At the regional level, um...
I didn't think so. No, I didn't think so, I was just confirming.
Yeah.
In my mind, yes.
At the regional level, it's been customary for the region to acknowledge that Mr. Smolin will take on the true secretarial tasks related to it. She's not here tonight, and I can, but I think we could either hold on that vote, or we can do that the next time. It's different than at the Amherst and the Pelham School Committee where the secretary is a member of the committee.
Why don't we do that? Maybe we'll hold on it. So, we then will entertain nominations for a vice chair. Yes?
I'd like to nominate Audra Gosensky for vice chair.
Second.
Second.
Are there further nominations? Are you willing to accept the nomination?
Yes.
Should've asked that first. Okay, seeing no more, we'll close the nominations. All those in favor of Audra Gosensky as vice chair, raise your hand, signifying aye. Nay? Abstentions? One abstention. So, congratulations to you.
So... I mean, I know there's a lot of topics tonight. Subcommittees are in the packet, but we certainly can do that perhaps at a different time.
We're totally doing that at a different point.
Okay.
I wanted a copy of the letter.
I'm sorry?
The thing, you said you have a letter?
Oh, I think that item number three on the agenda.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, of course.
Before that, I'm sorry.
I'm totally sorry. Apologize.
So, seeing the presence of a quorum for the Amherst School Committee, call the meeting to order at 7:25 PM, and this meeting, this committee has been called to order because this is an issue, or several issues actually, that impact the Amherst elementary schools as well, so that's why we are having a joint committee meeting tonight.
Great. Do you want me to handle the next part of it? Okay. So, before we go into announcements of public comment, we had, we became aware, we got, we saw in the Boston Globe, and I don't know where else it was shared around, a Superior Court decision in eastern Massachusetts affecting the Natick School Committee, and the Natick School Committee had been sued because of the public comment policy that they had, and the Superior Court handed down an injunction against the school committee in Natick. They laid out, essentially, there were some facts around, from what we saw, some facts around how Natick had both organized itself as well as also implemented its public comment policy that are, at least according to our attorney, materially or substantially different than what we were doing here in Amherst Pelham Regional School Committee, but there were also some common elements, particularly the, a lot of school committees across the Commonwealth adopt the model announcement and public comment policy from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, so there's a template that presumably at some point was vetted by attorneys that a number of school committees across the Commonwealth have adopted. So, there were elements of the Natick policy that were pretty identical to the Amherst one. In the Superior Court, when they were ruling relative to Natick, essentially laid out the priority of free speech rights in what they called limited public forums. So, in a limited public forum, which apparently what we're, this is what we're in, is a limited public forum, you can regulate the period for speech or comments, so things like having a three-minute limit on public comments is apparently completely legal. Having a set time period for comments, like a 20-minute time period for public comments, is also perfectly legal. There were substantially greater questions around any regulation of the content of the comments. Interestingly enough, the, despite a 12-page decision that cited a number of court precedents that argued really entirely in favor of not regulating the content of speech, the injunction ended by actually allowing Natick to continue to impose its rule of not mentioning names or titles in public comments, but that otherwise critiques were allowable. I'm going to be candid, I'm not an attorney, so probably that's why the mysteries abounded for me, but I actually couldn't understand, based on my reading of the decision, why the court decided to continue to allow an imposition of the rule disallowing, you know, identification of names or titles, because even though they commented, I'm paraphrasing, but the comment was essentially that it could be sensitive, and clearly sensitive, if you read through the decision, and it actually is available online, every other element of the decision reinforced the priority of free speech rights, and in fact, free speech rights particularly in governmental settings, so that when you have a governmental body that's making decisions, they particularly have, there's a priority on allowing speech to occur and to not curtail that speech, except for, as I mentioned earlier, by appropriate regulation in limited public forums, like the time limit on the comments or the length of the total comment period. So, with that, I'm just sharing with the committee that as I am not want to violate the First Amendment in anything that I'm doing, my proposal, in terms of how to proceed, just for the purposes of this meeting, and there's an item on later, discussion for talking later, is that I think we should follow our current policy of having three-minute public comments and a specific period of time for public comment, but that I am not inclined to enforce the other elements of our policy around the content of people's speech. And I'm happy, before I proceed, to hear from the committee on that, but as I said, I am not going to inadvertently or intentionally violate the First Amendment rights of people who want to come up. Recognizing that it's subject to litigation is not fully resolved, so the point is, the issue is not whether this decision is resolved in this case, the question is whether or not we, knowing at least some of the limited facts of the Natick situation, are going to act in such a way that might risk or jeopardize the possibility that we are in fact infringing upon someone's First Amendment rights. So, do I have that indulgence or not? I'm happy to take comments if there are any. Ms. Shalton?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with that general approach. I think it's the conservative approach. Like you've mentioned, in the opinion from the decision you mentioned, and in the opinion of our attorney, they both explicitly still allow for the prohibition of naming by reference to name or position. So, going again, going according to the most recent legal opinion, we would still be okay doing that. The conservative approach would be to allow that, so I'm fine with that conservative interpretation.
Yes, Gosensky?
I just have one, sorry, we're down the mic. One comment, which would be, in the effort of protecting the children that go to this school, that we would still want to refrain from naming students in any sort of complaint or, just to keep their privacy, and that's important.
Okay. Is there anything else? Okay, then, so, as we proceed, and if we need, again, to extend the time period of the comment period, we will, in the sense that, sorry, let me rephrase that. We're starting later than we originally intended, so on the agenda, it says this is scheduled for 7:15 to 7:35. We can still find a way to do this for, I guess, 20 minutes and see where we are at that point, and we have a timer. Is the timer able to be shown to the public?
Yep.
But otherwise, we're going to maintain the three-minute rule on public comments, and if you have additional comments beyond three minutes, just submit them in writing to the committee, please. And they'll become part of the record of the meeting. I should say, if you submit them in writing, they will become part of the record in minutes for the meeting, so they will in fact be maintained. And I guess, are you going to be my clicker or something there?
I think I'm in the right seat for that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
So, as I said, so three-minute limit, and I'm just, I am just stating it out loud again, people have heard what I just said earlier, we're not, we're not, it's just, it's public comment period. So, if anyone else to come up, please come forward, identify, oh, the rules still apply. Please identify yourself. Three minutes. Thanks.
Hi, Tiffany Thibodeau, proud math teacher at Amherst Regional Middle School and Amherst resident. I'm going to read just a statement, and I'll try to stay under three minutes. On May 8th, Amherst staff spoke to you about our concerns for our school. Fifty-two members of the staff signed a letter in support of the positive development of our school under Dr. Bodie's leadership. Educators do not sign public letters lightly, so those numbers have great significance. On May 22nd, Amherst staff hoped to share further suggestions and concerns, however, the negative remarks and atmosphere of public comment prevented the staff from being able to share the ideas. We are writing to you because we feel it would not be responsible as professional educators to be silent. Our essential message remains unchanged. Our ideas represent compromise. We are concerned that the negative focus that is plaguing our district, and particularly the middle school, is not allowing for the opportunity for the district or the school committee to work with us to consider possible solutions. Our primary concern is to sustain the positive direction of our school, and we have suggested actions that will lead to that. We acknowledge that the district has decided to move forward with hiring a two-year interim principal. This is not what we hoped for, but we acknowledge that this is the case. We appreciate that the district has tried to take some steps to respond to our concern, and we want to inform you that there are still some aspects for which we seek partnership. Partnership is the culture at Amherst. Since its early days in transforming from a junior high school to a middle school, we have been a school of teacher leaders. We have a history of collaborative and shared decision-making in our inquiry groups, curriculum leaders, principal advisory committee, and our team structures. Together, we work to identify and solve problems to improve our school. Therefore, we share our solutions with you. In addition to inviting four members of the staff to meet with the selected interim principal this summer, we ask that leadership structure include Patty Bodie and Alicia Lopez in some capacity. We have non-administrative roles in mind in order to address the concerns about licensure. Patty Bodie and Alicia Lopez could be reappointed for non-administrative positions in our schools. We are precedence for these positions. For many years, we've had one and sometimes two teachers serve as dean positions. These positions could be dean of students, dean of faculty, or simply dean. We have also had things similar to coaches, instructional coaches, and curriculum coaches. All of these were non-administrative positions that were intended to support the staff and the school. These ideas and more could be explored with the middle school staff to create confidence during the transitional times. We see these individuals, Patty Bodie and Alicia Lopez, as central to continuing development of the work over the past two years, including making social justice a focal point in our school's mission. Reappointing them to these positions would allow for the continuity of the social justice mission. I see that I'm also running out of time, but I do want to submit this letter with the rest of the writing to the committee.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Seems like an excellent roll for the vice chair. So, we've got to keep it rolling. Next, please.
Hello. Good evening, my name is Irene LaRoche. I teach social studies at Amherst Regional Middle School. I'm here tonight for the third school committee meeting in a row to continue to share good news with you. I believe that actions speak louder than words, and I believe we need to be self-reflective as well as reach out to others as we reflect upon our work. I believe there are times when critique is necessary, but I also believe that collaborative solutions create more enduring and positive outcomes. I have been saddened by the discourse and mistruths taking place about our school district and our school. I've struggled to see the value in tearing down rather than building up our community. Each time I've spoken to you, I try to share good news of what's happening. Each time, it's a snapshot, a simple piece of evidence from our daily work. Currently, 7th grade students are preparing for World Forum. World Forum is like a model UN, but unlike the UN, which would be made up of only privileged in society, our forum asks students to consider all different people who make up the fabric of a country. Goal of Forum is to consider worldview of people from countries across the globe as they discuss a contemporary issue. This year, students are looking at women's rights, climate change, indigenous peoples' rights, hunger and poverty, and access to clean water. In World Forum, students represent realistic point of view of a person from another country and simultaneously seek to see other viewpoints. Students create proposals for action, discuss proposals, and vote to see if they can come to agreements and compromises that meet the needs of all the countries represented. Teachers have been ending the year in 7th grade with World Forum since before I arrived in 2003. But now, more than ever, the skills of civil discourse, working to understand multiple perspectives, and collective problem-solving feel critical to our community and our society. We have much to learn from the passion and hope that our young people bring to the work. I hope that our community can move forward with a more generous spirit and collaborative mindset, with problem-solving and improvement as the goals. As critiques about racism and licensure have conflated, an important fact was ignored in the wave of critique about licensure swept up at least three administrators of color who will no longer be serving our community, including one at the middle school. I would like you to know that the staff have been talking about it and have concerns about the loss of these individuals and the important role they play for our diverse community. One solution that could be considered is the creation of professional development opportunities for people who do not currently hold administrative licenses. The organization of these opportunities should be inclusive of those administrators of color who are losing their positions, as well as other faculty who have an interest in developing skills and expertise for administrative licensure. I am sure there are many other ideas we can come up with together for the goal to sustain and build up our community rather than tear it down. I look forward to speaking with you again in the future to share the good of our students and our school. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Cynthia Stangowitz, and I'm a veteran teacher at Amherst Regional Middle School, and after working for the past 33 years in Amherst, I have seen almost constant of people at the middle school in Amherst. During this time, the middle school has been a revolving door with administrators coming and going with such a high frequency that I can no longer remember all of their names. I have worked for the good, the bad, the mediocre. What I have learned over time is that such inconsistency is not good for anyone. With all the complications and controversies surrounding our current administration, I cannot help but feel incredibly sad that some very important points seem to have been overlooked or at the very least disregarded. We need consistency and stability. We need an administration that knows us and understands who we are. Two years ago, Patty Bodie, Dave Rainin, and Alicia Lopez were chosen to lead our school precisely because they understood the community. They were highly qualified educators with years of experience to back them up. Most importantly, they knew us. They trusted us, and they were willing to listen to us. Their goal was to restore confidence in our leadership team and to heal our demoralized school. In two short years, they did just that. They led by compassion, confidence, and example. They provided a humane and sane leadership with a consistent progressive vision and created a healthy atmosphere for students and staff alike. In short, they brought stability to our chaotic and troubled school. To let these people go, who have provided consistency and continuity to our community, is a shame and a real loss for us all. Unfortunately, we are now back to a rudderless place with question marks about our future. I hope that people who felt compelled to criticize us harshly are feeling perhaps a little more happy now. They may be satisfied for the moment, but I suspect that perhaps they will not stay that way. Hopefully, one day our community will see how important it is to stop fighting itself. We need to recognize the dangers that surround us. We need to wake up and stop looking at the trees instead of the forest.
Steve Zacon Anderson, math teacher at the middle school. Thank you for letting me speak. I do want to recognize and appreciate people here at this meeting, and I know Patty is not here tonight, who I think have been incredibly patient and absorbing a lot of criticism here, and have been very professional in their approach to that. And I would, I'm basically going to be piggybacking on a lot of what was said and encouraged, and hope that the tenor of the meeting stays positive. Our children are watching, so I hope that we are going to behave accordingly. I think I'll kind of share, I'm not speaking for the group as much as my own personal experience, but having come here two meetings ago with this letter signed by 80% of the staff, and as was pointed out, in Amherst, signing a letter is a risk unto itself. And I hope people understand that that many people signing a letter was not for a crony, for a friend, or just to look out for our own, it's because we care so much about the school, and we're so desperate for something that we finally had, which is the word you keep hearing tonight, I think, stability and consistency, and we saw that, and we wanted to continue that. So, I hope that people would hear what a significant statement that was from people that really care about our school and our kids, which, by the way, are your kids. And, over the course of a couple of meetings, and actually over the course of the years I've taught here, as we go through this, these transitions, we get lots of compliments. The teachers get told, "You're resilient. You rise to the occasion." More upheaval, but man, you just keep going. And I like the compliment, I agree with it, but we're looking for something more than compliments. We're looking to be heard, to be listened to, to be considered, to be part of the solution, and to have what we say matter. So, I would ask for us to, for hopefully, whether it's asking the school committee to listen, or maybe, I know I can't question directly, but someone on the school committee may be asking the administration how they're addressing the concerns we have in our goal of the stability we desperately seek. Thank you.
Andrea Battle, community person, retired teacher, and very sympathetic person to the plight. However, there's a thing called licensure and certification, and no matter how you fudge it one way or the other, that is the beauty of the public school. Most people are licensed, and most people are certified. And I would like to say to the young lady, thank you so much for looking out for the people of color, but they should have the same standard. That's what I, my ancestors and I, who is now 70, have fought for. I do not want to be kept in a position that I technically, if I were white, would be moved. So, if you move someone out, you move them out because they don't have the qualifications. I just need to say that because they're yelling at me now from the other side saying, "What the heck's going on?" And I'm telling you, you need to hear what I'm saying. It's not about somebody of color, as opposed to whatever, there are certain things you just have to have. And I'd like to see this district get to the point where there's never a question, because that's the criteria. And I'm one of the people who worked on the committee for the process, et cetera, and put in a lot of time on that, because it is important. And like I said, I'm really sorry that I liked people, and I almost lost a job because of certification, and I understood, and they gave me the couple of months because I was about two credits away in a month, and that's the only reason I got a chance. So, that's what it's about. Private schools have wonderful students, and some of them have students who get through and learn nothing, and they can even become President of the United States. Enough there.
I am Chrissy Harmon, and I'm here to pick up where I left off at the last school committee with respect to discriminatory hiring practices. This word racism that's repeatedly come up in the past couple of months has made some people so uncomfortable that it's important to discuss what's actually happening here, which is called white fragility. White fragility is a state in which even a minimum amount of racial stress becomes intolerable to the point that it triggers this range of defensive moves. Outward displays of emotion, such as anger, "She is attacking me, this woman's the problem, it's not true," fear, such as argumentation, silence, leaving and walking out of the room. This certainly describes the actions and the behavior and the reactions to what I've been saying up here by everybody involved. The context of racism that I was speaking about is in terms of a power dynamic. The power dynamic played itself out in this hiring process. In order to have a self-professed progressive town, it's very essential to adopt this inalienable truth, and that's that this institution that we're talking about, the school committee, the public school, it was built by white people, and to this day, we all continue to benefit from that institution, and that's just a fact. Until that system is completely ripped down and built up, that's just always going to be true. No one needs to be offended, it's just a reality. Now, that that's out of the way, I would like to take a minute to say that $1,661,489 has been invested in paying unlicensed administrators in the last two years in being out of compliance with the Department of Secondary Education. I would also like to note that the middle school principal search and subsequent temper tantrums that have occurred by people that are not parents of students, who were no longer benefiting from this $80,000 to $90,000 a year that they were getting as a paid apprenticeship path to licensure, which is unheard of, distracted from the reality and the fact that there were actually like five other vice principal positions that were supposed to be posted the exact same time as the middle school principal hiring search. All those people were on hardship waivers. The day they were reassigned around May 10th, those positions should have been posted. It would have been very easy to avoid this mess if the system that long-term educators know inside and out was followed from the beginning. I'm just wanting to make sure in the last three seconds that the school committee is answering to the fact that 1.6 million... answering to the fact that $1.6 million has been invested in an unauthorized paid apprenticeship path to licensure. And where are the postings for the vice principal jobs?
Hi, I'm Nora Bryce. I'm a teacher at the middle school. And, thank you. I just wanted to offer support for the idea that we're, part of what was happening here as well, is that people involved with hiring were looking for the most talented individual. And I think licensure is very important, but it's also important to have a wide range of experience to do this job, having a job as a school, as a teacher, as a principal, as, you know, all those things develop over time. And I just want to thank people who are in the hiring position to be looking for people that have this level of experience because it's through that level of experience that we actually get people that know the full range of what's being asked of them in the job. And licensure is an important piece, obviously, but also that experience. And I think one of the things that's happening is we're looking for highly talented people who are experienced in this wide range of skills. There are other, there are some frameworks that we also need to realize, which is that one of the reasons we absolutely need the best team on the ground is that we're not just an isolated district anymore, we're facing competition from surrounding districts. So this internal critique that we're going through is important, but we also have to realize that we're not the only game in town, and we have to have the best team on the ground to compete with the other school districts that are around us. And I'm hoping that people that are applying critical lenses to our school district are doing the same thing to the other school districts, that is, they're doing the same sort of critical analysis so that we're, you know, we're operating under equal scrutiny in that way because I think it's very important that, you know, everybody is examined in this way. It's not just about us. It's now in this field where we have other people in the marketplace. So that was my point again.
Catherine Offe, former school committee member and Amherst citizen. The superintendent has received some criticism recently because the district or the administration recently because the district is not 100% compliant with the state's licensure requirements. That's true. But the complaints have failed to consider a key contextual fact. Amherst and the regional district are 98.6% in compliance, a higher percentage than the state average of 97.2. I'm also heartened to read in public documents that the district is committed to becoming 100% compliant by next year. This is not defensive or an attack, it's just fact that the district is also working hard to promote equity for students and staff. The vital work, this vital work has to be a sustained effort to address all the ways that institutional racism and bias affect our students and staff every day. I think our school district is on the right track. The past, this past year, for example, the number of staff members of color who were hired reached a five-year high. The retention rate for staff of color is also at a five-year high. At the high school, a new restorative practice program was implemented with a new restorative justice staff position and has included multiple staff trainings, student engagement, and mentor support. A racial equity professional learning community was formed this year to increase understanding of racial inequities, including goals of recognizing cultural and institutional racism and understanding how white organizational culture affects our classroom practice and school policies. The high school did a climate survey this year which showed significant improvement from the same survey in 2015 to questions like, "Do teachers treat me with respect?" and "Is school a place where I feel safe?" The high school community is continuing to look into this data to understand what has made the difference. An all-day curriculum day for staff in March had workshops with topics that included how to have a difficult conversation about race and other identities, how to create restorative circles in classrooms, the impact of poverty and class on learning, mental health issues in the classroom with a focus on trauma, how to overcome racial disparities in discipline reports. Many of these programs were directly recommended by the school committee's own equity task force and implemented by the administration. These initiatives are not widely known outside the school community, and there are several others that I haven't mentioned. Of course, our schools have a long way to go, but our administration and teachers are working in good faith in the interest of all students and staff. Thank you.
My name is Sarah Marshall, and I have one child in the Amherst system just finishing eighth grade. Two years ago, my family was very anxious about sending our daughter to ARMS, given all we had heard about the general instability in administration and low morale among the faculty, and we strongly considered sending her to private school. I want to thank Dr. Morris and Dr. Bodie for turning that sorry situation around so promptly and for fostering a very positive culture of respect for all and of academic excellence. Right now, ARMS is flourishing, at least in my eyes. I am all the more astounded at the recent accusations of racism leveled at Dr. Morris. As far as I know, there is nothing in the public record, either with respect to the search for a successor to Dr. Bodie or in his words or actions over the last few years in the role of superintendent, that remotely justifies such an inflammatory label. None of us, none of us are mind readers, and only Dr. Morris knows why he rejected applicants put forward by the principal search committee. Speculations about motives are just that, speculations. It distresses me to know that some members of our community apparently find it easy to believe the worst of Dr. Morris. It distresses me to find that the atmosphere surrounding the superintendent and the school committee is again becoming poisoned by suspicion and anger. I urge the committee to ignore complaints for which there is no evidence, even as it supports the superintendent's efforts to improve hiring practices. Thank you.
We're still having time? It's getting close, isn't it? Is there still time?
We're not cutting it off at you.
I'm John McCabe. I'm a Crocker parent, a second grade student there, and thanks to the committee for all the great work you do. As someone who served as an education administrator for two decades, I saw again and again how important it is to follow HR rules and regs. I see this whole struggle as what, I teach philosophy, what Hayek called "The struggle to the death when both sides are right." And I think that's where we're at. Search committee procedures are there to ensure that hiring processes promote both excellence and fair opportunity. We all know that. At the same time, there's always a tension, and we know this too, between the need to attract strong and diverse outside candidates and the need to provide avenues of fair opportunity for folks already doing excellent work inside the system. I saw this where I worked. Having worked, I'm going to use names, having worked with both Mike Morris and Doreen Cunningham last year, I got the sense that they are well aware of these issues and that Doreen was perhaps hired in part to make a real impact on this and focus on getting Amherst HR house in order. I'd like to congratulate Doreen, or Assistant Superintendent Cunningham, on the progress she's made so far on this, and I'd like to lend my support to the idea that hiring and promotion processes should follow proper HR procedures and adhere to state regs regarding certification requirements, okay? That said, I would like to finish by taking strong issue with those who have stooped to ad hominem attacks against our superintendent in recent weeks. Folks, we have real white supremacists at large and out of the closet, all through the political system at the national level. We all know about this. We're at a crisis point, in my humble estimation, where white supremacists are now emboldened to threaten the rest of us on a daily basis. To smear folks here in the room with that racist label for political effect, I think is really not acceptable. It's a degradation of our local discourse and also undermines and degrades the forceful critique and resistance so necessary in this time when so many real white supremacists need to be called out and forced back, quite frankly. Mike is not a racist. Let's hold our fire on that score for people who have it coming, okay? Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Deb Leonard. I'm a parent of three children in the school system. I'm a Fort River Elementary School parent, I'm an Amherst middle school parent, and I'm a high school parent. I have two points. They're short. The first is, I take exception to the public criticism of Mike Morris's professionalism in a context in which he is unable to defend himself because of his professionalism. The second, Mike Morris's leadership as both interim and permanent superintendent has advanced our school district in its mission, and I quote, "of the academic achievement of every student learning in a system dedicated to social justice and multiculturalism." Thank you.
We need to hear to our final.
Vera Duong-Menukeage, parent in Amherst. I want to throw out a figure, $575. That's what's being requested of me when I submitted my public records request around licensure in the district. That is something that I believe is excessive considering that licensure is already work being done, as we have heard, and I don't think it should take that long to compile. So I'd be happy to forward the school committee my public records request and the response from the district, so you may consider waiving the $575 for information that is in the public domain, that we should be promoting transparency, that this should be information that's not hidden, but it should be out in the open regarding licensure in our district. Thank you.
So that's it? Oh.
It's not about the middle school. All of this has been thrown into the wash. I'm Abby O'Morris. I guess I'm not, I was a senior at the school back in the day.
We can applaud for that, right?
And I want this to come across as a very positive thing because as going to high school and also the middle school for a year and a half, I learned a lot about being like an advocate and activist in a way, in a place that I was really supported in my views, where most people agreed with me. And I think the high school in particular did a really good job of having conversations that were really hard like these. Mr. Jackson calls them like white knuckle conversations, where you like want to make a fist and grab the table and Jerry Knuckles turn white about everything from race to sexuality and gender to immigration, to ability, to refugees, like across the table in school we've had those discussions. And that's an amazing first step, but it's also a first step. And I think where the high school really fails is taking it beyond that step and showing students what they can actually do to have an impact. And a great example of that is the bill that the Mass Legislature passed recently about gun safety and taking guns away from people who are clearly should not have guns, and that was something that was mostly led by teenagers. And it happened because we called their legislators, we called our state rep, and we called our state senators, and we told them, "This is important, we want this to happen." And I don't think high schoolers understand how impactful their voices can be when it comes to influencing their elected officials, even if they can't vote. And now I'm speaking about all of you because most of you, with the exception of the two of you, are elected officials. And I think that it, I imagine it must be hard to kind of represent people who can't vote for you, if that makes sense? Like your kind of, your job is to represent students and high schoolers and middle schoolers and elementary schoolers sometimes who are not eighteen and can't vote. And I have a whole bunch of issues with that. That's for another day. So kind of my proposal, and I think this should be easy, would be to send out an email, like maybe once a month, once every six weeks, and be like, "Here are the minutes from our last three meetings, and here is our next meeting and the agenda for that," just so students know what's happening because aside from like me and Jack and like the three friends, we can get to like listen to us rant about this, we don't know what's happening in these meetings. But I think if you kind of made that intentional effort and reached out, it's really easy to send a mass email to all the high schoolers, and I'm assuming also the middle schoolers, that they would be really interested in this. I'm sure middle school students have a lot of opinions about this, and they don't necessarily know even who you are. Like I don't think 99% of the high schoolers could name even one of you, right? Until graduation, and maybe they could name you because you spoke. They have no idea who you are. And if you emailed them, I think you'd be surprised at the number of students who want to be involved and just don't know how. That's it.
Okay. Well, yeah, I mean, we will, before you speak, let me just say this. Before the next person speaks, we're going to close this after this comment.
Good evening to all of you, and thank you for the opportunity, for allowing me to speak. The last time I was here, and I'm not sure, Mr. Chairman, if you had addressed what happened at the last school committee meeting when the committee left in the middle of someone's testimony, and I was locked out, so that was partly why I was late of this building I'm in. I just want to say that conversations are difficult to have when they, they impact us as deeply as they do as currently these conversations that we're having about licensure in the district do. But, and I have asked that all of us try to hear what each one of us has to say on these issues. And I don't think that's an unreasonable request, regardless of what side you find yourself. But I want to say as a person of color that I am a little frustrated when white people try to tell me how much is being done for people of color, for students of color. If people of color are coming to you and saying to you that we are disproportionately affected by policies and practices in the district, please hear us, please believe us, we're not lying to you. I don't need anyone who has not had my experience to tell me what my experiences are. And I am speaking as a parent, and I am speaking as a person of color, a member, a tax-paying, law-abiding member of this community. To please, this is the body to whom we go when we want to, when we have concerns, when we want to speak back to policies and practices. It is our right, you tell us so. And I'm asking you, please, the kind of disrespect that I saw happen here last time of one member of the community being trolled by members of this school committee, I found it shameful, sir. And I just wanted to register that. And if we are going to have conversations as difficult as they are, the least we can do is to be respectful, we can hear each other's perspectives and respect each other's perspectives. Thank you very much.
Okay, so that closes the public comments section. Are there any announcements from the committee? A number of members were actually at the graduation ceremony of the day, but it was actually, as it always is, an inspiring exercise, absolutely wonderful exercise. It focuses on what we're here for. Next is licensure update.
So I'll start the update, and then I think Ms. Cunningham will finish it, and, you know, we'll be open to any questions that the committee has. So. Unless you want me to be in three minutes as well. Jump time, right? Jump time. So I want to start from a place of acknowledging that our district has had challenges as it relates to educator licensure. I also want to say that we've been and we continue to be dedicated to resolving these issues, that both things can be true. We can both acknowledge that issues have existed and also talk about our work that has been an ongoing effort over this whole year to resolve them. And I want to compliment Ms. Cunningham, who, when she first started in the summer, recognized some of the issues and started to work on them head-on. And I think a key phrase we want to talk about is working on, working on these issues with our faculty and with our staff members, that yes, we need to have licensed staff, and that's what we're dedicated to, and we also want to recognize and acknowledge that and that's what we're dedicated to, and we also want to recognize and acknowledge that we have wonderful staff members that we want to work with to realize that goal. As in any other area that we have in our district, we're dedicated and committed to implementing the best practices moving forward. And fortunately, we've been able to partner successfully with DESI on the licensure issue. Trying to think how many times between you and I we've called the licensure office this year, that number's a pretty high number, and they answer the phone, they get back to us, and they give us clarity on information, and they've been an active partner in supporting our work to improve our practices in this area. One, for instance, one area of guidance that DESI Legal has offered us recently is about the actions, decisions that administrators have made at times where they've been unlicensed. I'm not talking about people who were waived, but folks who have not had an active license at any point. And DESI's legal department has shared with us that the decisions made by these administrators are valid as long as the process used in making those decisions was consistent with state and federal guidelines. We wanted to make sure that if there was a need to go back to prior decisions that were made, that we would do whatever DESI Legal's department, DESI's legal department would tell us needed to happen, and that's the kind of support separate from whether I'm happy or unhappy with their guidance, that's the kind of guidance they've been giving us consistently, that's a more recent one, but that's the guidance they've been giving us throughout this year. As we move forward, our commitment is that 100% of our administrators are fully licensed for the 2018-2019 school year, and I'd like to talk about the current roster of administrators and their licensure status moving forward. And I think I'm going to go school by school, because I want to be very specific and try to share with the committee and the community our plans moving forward that are still in, some of them are still in process, some of them are not, some of them are established. I'll start with the high school. So the high school principal, Mark Jackson, has his professional license. The assistant principal, Mickey Gromacki, also has her professional license, I should say assistant principal-principal license. Talib Siddique, who was hired to be the second assistant principal at the high school last month, or relatively recently, has an initial license and good standing. And the last person who's an administrator at the high school is Rich Faro, who's the athletic director, and both Ms. Cunningham and then the DESI's educator licensure office confirmed that there is no license for an athletic director, much like an HR director there is no license for. And there are other roles that work in school districts where there is no license. The only thing that would be a limitation of Mr. Faro's work, or any athletic director, depersonalizing it, is that they can only manage about, it's under 20% of their time has to be spent evaluating licensed staff members. If it bridges that, then they need a different license. Mr. Faro has a very light evaluator load, it doesn't come close to 20% of his responsibilities. So that's the administration at the high school. Mr. Faro also does some work and support the middle schools as well, he's primarily at the high school, but he also does support the athletic director there as middle school sports. At Summit Academy, Dave Slovan is a principal, and he also has a professional license. The middle school, the principal search is underway, there's multiple highly qualified candidates who have their licenses in the pool. Only a licensed candidate will be hired. When someone is hired, once a candidate's hired, which will be in the next two weeks, a leadership structure will be determined to figure out the rest of the vacancies at the middle school level. And much like the rest, what we've committed to the community, to ourselves and to DESI is that we're only able to hire licensed folks who have the assistant principal-principal license for those roles. At Fort River School, Diane Chamberlain is the principal, and she is under a valid initial license. At Crocker Farm, Derek Shea is the principal, he's working under a valid professional license. At Wildwood, Nick Yaffe is the principal, and he's also working under a valid professional license. And all the things I just mentioned are not contingent on other things happening, these are their current licenses as of today. So we are currently in the process at the elementary level of reviewing whether assistant principal roles, just for those, some backstory, background, elementary assistant principal roles are 10-month positions that start in mid-August. So that's a little different than, for instance, Ms. Gromacki's role, which is a full-year role, assistant principal at the high school, but the elementary level, those are school year plus certain amount of days.
It's not 2/27.
2/27, yeah. So it does build in days above the teacher contract, but it's not, they don't work during the summer. And so we have a little time, and so we are in active discussions with our principals about what that will look like, whether we're going to maintain having assistant principals next year, or whether alternative leadership models, which are used in several neighboring districts, will be implemented. If we do hire for assistant principals at those schools, only applicants with the appropriate licensure will be considered. In the past, we've utilized assistant principals in most of our elementary schools, right now all, but there were times when it wasn't at all. And there's no state directive or mandate to do so. The advantages of having assistant principals at the elementary level is they can be more heavily involved in student discipline, particularly suspensions, than non-administrators. At the elementary level, we have very infrequent suspensions, but it still is helpful to have another adult who can be involved in that if the need arises. They can evaluate teachers, that's a role that's clearly defined to be an administrative role. And currently, they often chair IEP meetings, so special education meetings, and five of four meetings. Alternate models used other places, shift responsibilities. So for instance, chairing IEP meetings can often be done by education team leaders who are not administrators with background and expertise in special education. We've had that at different times in the past at the elementary level, it's currently the model at the middle school and high school, where education team leaders are the primary folks involved in chairing special education meetings. In terms of evaluation and discipline, if we were to go to alternate models, more of this work would fall to principals, but other tasks, such as curriculum development and staff leadership, could be shared with non-administrative staff, or staff in non-administrative roles. In terms of local districts or comparisons, the elementary schools in Long Meadow, Northampton, and Wilbraham, three districts with similarly sized elementary schools, some of those are a little smaller, Long Meadow in particular has some larger ones, they do not have assistant principals, and they rely on other mechanisms to make sure that student and staff needs are met. However, South Hadley and several of the elementary schools in West Springfield do have assistant principals, so it's a local decision that's made by local districts about how to structure their schools to make sure that, again, student needs and staff needs can be met. Both models, having assistant principals and not having assistant principals can work. The big shift is that models, with the different models, is who does which aspects of the work does significantly change, and that's why we're giving principals some time after the school year to sort through their needs and define what model they'd like to have in their school building, and they'll be making the determinations once things quiet down a little bit and most of the staff and students are off for summer vacations. And if they do post vacancies, they'll engage the school communities in any vacancy that gets posted, and having a team of staff members, parents, guardians, community members to be involved in that selection process. So just to summarize before, I think Ms. Cunningham shares some of her work around licensure, is that we currently have licensed principals in all of our schools. When we look at the teams we have at the high school, everybody's where they need to be with licensure. Middle school, we'll have that sorted pretty soon in terms of the principal, and build from there out about what other vacancies need to have. And at the elementary level in Amherst, I want to be careful, I'm not talking about Pelham here, just Amherst, because it's not, sometimes we can link those, there's a consideration of what staffing model is going to best meet the needs of students and staff in the schools, and that'll be announced to the school communities, and there'll be an engagement process around selection, whatever the role is, whatever roles are posted.
But we need, forgive me.
Yeah, please.
Here's an last summing thought, I'd like you to add to that if you're willing to.
Please.
But whatever staffing model that is, it'll be appropriate license, and the duties will conform with.
Absolutely.
State regulations and policies and laws?
That, precisely. So again, our work with DESI has been a very collaborative one, I think they're aware and we're aware, and we've been very transparent about some of the challenges that the district has faced over the years, and we and they are very committed to us making changes around that in short order, and that's what we've committed to, and that's what we're going to do.
Can I be slightly more blunt?
Please.
You, I'm assuming your efforts to engage the principals in the, whatever kind of management model you're organizing for the elementary schools, you're not, you're, I assume you're trying, based on what you just said, you're trying to do this in a way in which you're allowing the principals to provide some sort of leadership in how they're organizing their schools, and what you're not doing is you're not reverse engineering an outcome either based on personnel or based on some preconceived notion around how you, in other words, you're not, you're not, the point I make, let me be really blunt, there's an accusation I've heard, that you were trying to jury-rig how you're staffing out leadership within elementary schools to reverse engineer an outcome that somebody might have in mind. And I'm, what I'm, what I would rather, I mean, if this is a true statement, I would like to hear from you whether you think there's any validity to that and what you're doing, and clarify that you're actually going to, you know what I mean? You know I'm getting at?
I do, I'm sorry.
Even more pointed and blunt if you want me to be.
Perhaps I needed that second round of bluntness. No, I think that's spot on, and to be very blunt back, any position that's get posted, whether it's an assistant principal position, a staff leadership position, will be posted and have a fully open, transparent process with community members involved in the selection. It's not going to be internal postings, there're not going to be anything that has the appearance of nor predicts the outcome of that search, it's really, can we create a model that's going to work for students and staff, and then how do we find the best person to fill that role?
Thank you.
Yeah. Sorry, I was a little thick on the front end of that.
So do you want to ask questions now, or do you want to go through your presentation? I apologize, I jumped in only because I felt like you were dangling in the point you were trying to make.
Yeah, I appreciate taking care of that.
So I'll just say the second part of the presentation is only to explain another part of the DESI request.
Sure.
So I just need to.
Oh, yeah. Is that far enough?
I think so. I go down just a little.
Okay.
So DESI had requested some information, Dr. Morris just mentioned part of the information that they requested in our response to DESI. And what I will say is that at the last school committee meeting, I said I would take partial responsibility for some of the things that occurred when we requested the waivers. And in taking that responsibility, I showed, I showed the current slide about the screenshot that, the screen that I looked at when I requested the waiver, and how, when you look at the screen in School Spring, that it just showed one person, and so I requested the waiver saying that one person had applied for the position. So DESI asked that we go back now, and now that I know how to use School Spring, I've been going into the activity log, which was what I mentioned before. So I just wanted to show another screen, same thing. So here's the others, another screen for another position that was posted where I requested waivers, and I was able to list all the licensed applicants for that position. So these are two things that we were, two additional pieces of information that was being sent to DESI to explain why one request, or a few, I think about four or so requests, mentioned one candidate, and then other requests showed other candidates had applied for the position. So these are some of the shots, the screenshots, that I'm sending there so that they can see what we saw. And then we have the letter from School Spring.
Sorry.
So this letter from School Spring basically just lets us know that, as mentioned, it was just my error, right? So I called it a glitch, it's human error, just as they mentioned in the highlighted portion, a lack of knowledge about certain features that School Spring has for me to be able to go back in and find all the candidates that applied. And so School Spring wrote and let us know that, or let, for you guys to know and understand that we did not create these filters, that it's a default filter in the School Spring program, it's just at the time I did not know how to use that program. So in addition to the screen prints, I'm sending DESI this letter that we received from School Spring.
And I think I just want to share with that, that I own, is my responsibility for a new staff member to have kind of more updated training, and the training that Ms. Cunningham received did not resolve this challenge. So I also want to be sensitive that, so I was new in the role, and the person who did the training wasn't successful at resolving this, and so I don't want Ms. Cunningham to take as much ownership as perhaps she just did.
That's why I said partial.
Just a question, because I noticed in the letter that it says that ongoing training is a valuable tool for customers to ensure detailed understanding of the capabilities, features, and functions of the solution, so does this mean that they are offering training to the district, and will we be taking that?
So they have offered training, yes, and we will be scheduling some training from our, with our HR department, so that we can then turnkey it to our principals and administrators.
Great. So are there questions or comments?
Yeah, so thank you for this, it's been a while since we last met, so it's good to get a lot of update, it's a lot to unpack there, so I'll just kind of summarize some comments, and then just one question. So I think in general, the approach you're taking of having 100% licensure for the next school year is the right goal to have, and only hiring licensed applicants, I think that's the proper way to be responding to this situation that you both inherited. And as we monitor that going forward, I really look to DESI as the regulatory authority and the body that can speak to, is this current situation acceptable, are we doing the right thing? Therefore, I'm been glad, you know, since last meeting, to know that Doreen has been on this since August, has been working with DESI since August. I think it can get confusing when we have opinions from different vantage points about the nature of licensure, and I'm sure most in our community were probably not down in the weeds in the details of licenses as many are now, but I really look to DESI on this. So I look forward to the next letter that we get from DESI, saying whether what we're doing is okay. I was happy to read in the news a few weeks ago that they said this is definitely not an investigation, that they've been working with us, and we go forward from there. There's another point that came up in public comment that I was really happy to hear, and that's that, you know, when we try and get our heads around the nature and scope of this licensing issue, you know, that we need to put this in the context of how other schools are operating, and that, you know, and someone brought up charter schools, and it's this critical analysis of charter schools, I think most people would be pretty surprised to hear that administrators and teachers at charter schools aren't required to be licensed, and that the license levels at the charter schools in our area are under 70%. So, you know, if you're really looking to dig into a critical analysis of licensure and how that affects education, I think charter schools are a good way to go, but I'll stop digressing on that point. So, so yes, I look forward to the next letter, and I guess my question is, is another thing that came up during public comment, which is, understanding and accepting this is the way we're going forward, and having it had its impact on the middle school principal search. We had 52 teachers sign a letter asking for continued openness and flexibility and dialogue as the middle school leadership structure evolves. And we haven't heard a lot of detail on that, because everything is up in the air, obviously, and so, one is I hope to hear more updates from you on that going forward, but I just wanted to get your, your take on that, what that number of teachers signing onto that letter means to you, and how that affects your thinking about it going forward.
So we certainly read every letter we receive, from whether it's staff member, community member, and we read them closely and consider them closely. What we've done, I think it was referenced a little bit earlier, in terms of moving forward, is we have put out a call to the middle school staff to create a leadership team that would work with Ms. Cunningham, myself, whoever gets hired. I think we're roughly looking at four staff members, and I'm being explicit in saying staff members, because there's a whole lot of staff members who identify as teacher, and then there's a whole lot that do not as well, and they're all valuable to the middle school experience, to work over the summer on that transition, that this transition, whoever we hire, I'm sure they'll be wonderful, and they're going to need to make strong relationships with middle school staff on the get-go. I'm fortunate, we're fortunate that we received, you know, you never know, it's summertime, people may be off doing other things, having other work, doing, spending time with their family, and received a good number of applications, and which, applications is kind of long-form, I mean, it was asking a paragraph about their thoughts about things, and that's, I think, going, in my opinion, it's going to be a critical group moving forward to help make decisions so that when we get back in the fall, the new principal is acclimated to the needs of the middle school, understands some of the tensions that perhaps exist at the moment, and has actively worked to build relationships and their understanding of this middle school, what the current needs are, and a direction that can move forward. So I'm not saying it's everything, but it was a very, it was an idea that came up, and I thought it was a great one, to really start moving forward with a leadership group over the summer that meets multiple times for long stretches, I mean, like two to, like half-days multiple times, so that the new principal is positioned for success, it also gives the staff a window into decisions that get made over the summer that are integral for how the school year starts. I think there's a balance, or a tension, per- I think there's a balance, or a tension perhaps, depending on your point of view, I guess. I think there's a lot of really good reasoned arguments to take actions before someone's hired, and I'll just say, I've been resistant to that, that my approach in generally has been to support principals, and certainly give feedback where feedback is needed, but to make sure they feel empowered to be leaders of their school. And so I am hesitant to make decisions before someone's hired. I think the implications of the entry plan for that person are greatly affected when someone in my role, or Ms. Cunningham's role, starts making, is making multiple decisions that greatly impact how that person's going to experience their role. And so, the thing I want to say is, the counterargument to that is incredibly reasonable, right? If I was someone who, whose school year ended next Thursday, the uncertainty of some decisions not being made while I'm at work, it's entirely legitimate and reasonable to have a sense of frustration around that. And I want to acknowledge that, we've heard that, and I think we heard it in the letter tonight, and I want to honor that, that that's a totally reasonable thing from an educator's point of view. And for me, I think I had to weigh, I am having to weigh that as compared to making sure that I'm positioning someone we're hiring for success. In my opinion, giving she or he some leeway and some decision-making and support along, making decisions along with a leadership group, I think that's really important for the entry into the school environment. So I want to acknowledge that there's different points of view on this, I want to acknowledge the reasonable rationality of both sides, and explain why I've been hesitant to move forward with decisions before we hire someone for that role.
Skwenski.
Sure. So, I just want to say that I've spent a lot of time reading emails that the public has sent, or, you know, Mr. Salisbury wrote a nice opinion piece in the Amherst Bulletin, and I, I just want to say that despite that, I'm not often in a position to respond, I do read them all. And I think, you know, my couple of takeaways, as well as all the data the district has provided, you know, I want to acknowledge that clearly, you know, Mr. Salisbury was my teacher 25 years ago. I appreciate his experience in the school, and I, and I, you know, full-heartedly believe that that was his experience, and that that's where we were then. And I hope that in that 25 years, we've come a long way, and I acknowledge we're not where we need to be. And, you know, I think we've made big improvements, and I think there's room to grow. And so in that effort, I know you guys have sort of instituted some, you know, best practices, and are continuing to improve. And I think it's, you know, maybe my job as the school committee to make sure that we're measuring you against those goals, and that we see that we're continuing to move in the right direction at a pace and speed that makes sense for us. So along those lines, what I was looking for, you know, after the summer, I know there's always a lot of hiring that occurs in a, in a normal summer, this one may be even more, that at the beginning of the school year, when it makes sense, when everybody's sort of in their positions, and we've had time to get the school year rolling, would be an opportunity to look through all of the new hires and their licensure status, that we checked that they came in, that we have their licenses, that they're valid and appropriate for the roles that they're in. If there are waivers that are applied for, that the school committee understands that why the waivers were, were there, and what they were for. And then my, the other half of that, because there's really two issues here, right? We have the licensure issue, and then we have the ongoing, you know, our, trying to reach our diversity goals within the school staff. And so the other half of that is, part of that, you were, I was able to get data from your summative evaluation artifacts that showed some of the metrics that you've been keeping internally, but to, just to report on those sort of annually, which is, you know, have we hired, you know, what's the percentage of hires, new hires that are minority staff? And then it would, I think, you know, the ultimate goal here is that we have diversity at all levels of our organization. So when we look at our staff, you know, what's the, the sort of, the percent minority staff, or whatever groups that makes sense to put that in, I'm not the expert there, at the different levels of the organization, so paraprofessionals. We have this pathways program, because we know we have a larger diverse pool at paras than we do at teachers. And I imagine that's, you know, similar funnel to administration is probably less. So that if we track those, you know, over many years, we should be seeing improvement, and then we know we're, we're doing a good job, or that our policies and our procedures and our best practices are supporting our goals. So that would be something I'd be looking for in that coming timeframe. And certainly, I'm not the expert in what the right groupings are, and what the right licensure groups are, but I think that that allows us to have some accountability, not on your day-to-day decisions, I don't want to know what your day-to-day decisions are, but that overall, year-over-year, that we're growing in the right direction.
Do you have any, there may not be any immediate response to that?
So I'll just say, to me, that makes sense, and I think perhaps we can talk at a future meeting about the timings and logistic of that, and even, I think, to have agreement of the committee and the two of us on what the groupings are. Because I think we could do that work ourselves, and that might be inconsistent with what committee members might be wondering about. So to me, that actually would be a great future agenda item to dig into, not on terms of the data, but actually about what data we want to do, we want to pull, and how to, what's a reasonable timeline for an annual report, and Ms. Cunningham could share also about the hiring cycle, and when she would be able to report back out on some of those variables.
No, I just, the only thing I want to say is that I would like to remind the school committee that during the November 28th meeting, I did mention about the licensing and retention of teachers and such. So the timeframe would be about the same, like late fall, where we would be able to report on the same thing.
Okay. So I have right now Ms. Ordonez, then Ms. Spitzer. And please raise your hand if you want to talk.
So I just have a couple of questions, partly, I think, coming from myself, and then also partly coming from just questions that have arisen from the community, that I think just are important to help us understand, you know, some of the changes that you've been talking about that are going to be implemented moving forward, right? So one of the questions I have is, is there a protocol in place to keep track of when licenses expire, right? And so what I mean by that is, you know, do managers keep track during annual reviews, or is there some other mechanism that kicks into place to help, you know, administrators keep track of those license expirations? And then the other, the other question, I'll just say them both now, so that you guys can decide how you want to answer these. You know, what I've gathered from conversations that I've had, both with the superintendent, with the assistant superintendent, is that DESI does not notify district of applications, right? So that means that if a, you know, an educator or administrator's license is about to expire, and they are doing what they're supposed to be doing, which is applying for a license renewal, that DESI doesn't let you know about that, right? And so I'm wondering if educators and administrators are required to notify the district? So, you know, are your own staff required to let you know when they apply for license renewals?
So to answer the first part, when I came in July, I wasn't told of any protocols or any procedures or process for what you're asking to occur. I spoke recently to the director of, or the assistant director of Information Systems to find a way to get this information included in the My Learning Plan, so that when an educator is completing their annual goal, they're also reporting on their licensing status. The other part about DESI, DESI sent me this letter today, and I just took some excerpts from it, because, as mentioned previously, the license is the individual's responsibility. So they copied it, or they sent me this email to say that when an educator gets their license, the quote is listed in the email or sent to them, letting them know that it's their responsibility to remain informed and current. They also want us to know as a district that we are also responsible for making sure that we have licensed individuals, right? So, moving forward, we will continue to work with DESI to, to just make sure that we're following every process, every procedure, every licensing update, and ask, we will ask and work with our staff to inform us of whatever applications they've sent in via that My Learning Plan new page or new question that they have to respond to.
Ms. Spitzer?
So my question is very similar, wondering how we could institutionalize a process of finding out when administrators are at risk of being unlicensed. Because I think we're doing a good job of, you communicated clearly how we're making sure that people were hiring our license, but it seems like a lot of the issues we've had have actually been folks who were licensed at one point in time, and yet, we're not licensed, we're not keeping their licenses active. So it sounds like you just responded to that question. And I think I would also just like to echo that I am also been listening to and reading all of the emails from everybody, and it's been really frustrating not to be able to have as much of a two-way dialogue as I'd like to have in this role, due to open meeting law concerns, and also just, you have to, being in this public role has been frustrating sometimes, because we can't go back and forth as much as we'd like. But I like to say that I'm listening to everybody and reading all of your emails, so thank you, and that was it.
Could I, could you jump in after the call?
So the beauty of going last is that everybody else has already asked my questions. So I had the same questions that Ms. Ordonez did, and similar to Ms. Spitzer and Ms. Skwenski, sorry. I also have been reading everything, I've been also doing my own research and asking questions of you both. So one, I want to thank you for updating us in this really thorough and detailed update, not just tonight, but also at every step along the way, and answering my questions and everybody's questions throughout the process. Your candor and detailed thorough responses have been really appreciated. And while this, the last couple of months have been maybe uncomfortable going through this process, I, I am appreciative that this was brought up and sort of elevated for a focus and conversation, because I think it is important, and, you know, knowing you were on it already since August, both of you, and I think now the community is aware of the hard work that you've been doing, and, and the, and the work that, that you're putting in place going forward. And I think this whole process has brought that to everybody's attention, started the conversation, and also pointed in ways and directions that we can continue to improve and strengthen that process overall. So thank you. So I don't have questions, because you already asked them.
Just come on up to the microphone then, please.
So I was just hoping I could be a tad selfish and greedy for a second, and go back to Mike's comment, or Mr. Dr. Morris's comment earlier, but the possibility of taking a little bit of a look at how we go forward with the, the role of slashing it an assistant principal or something else. So I think the thing that I try and listen to when I'm in the back and come to the meetings in the weeks, we don't have enough time to do this recently, because we're obviously got some challenging conversations taking place, but what's the purpose of coming to school, right? What is the, what is the role of coming to school, right? And so I've said this at these meetings before, for me, it's all about social mobility, right? It's so that someone like myself, working-class person, can actually maybe have some good teachers, some people in my life, some family members, a little bit of luck along the way, and then you get to do something different with your life, right? And you can get out of the situation you're in, a little bit of choice, right? So for me, that's what school's all about. So how does that connect to what we're talking about with the assistant principal piece, right? So I'm definitely in with Mike, in terms of this perhaps sort of contemplation, or to take a look at, you know, how we could actually set something up. But what I'm not interested in is some sort of abolition of a role, because it takes a very large number of people, and this is where the greed and the selfishness comes in, right, to actually do the work that we're trying to do, so that we can sort of promote this idea that, that kids can come to school and have that possibility of moving beyond what your, your, your situation is, right? So, you know, and one thing I do like about working with Mike, he's, he's fine for someone like me fires in a comment that's maybe not exactly going, and this maybe keeps me around sometimes, right, because I'm willing to just jump in and say, not, not the party line all the time. So I don't think I heard this up here, but I think I heard a bit long-winded in other places. We can't abolish, like, the, the leadership role, like an assistant principal does, right? Whether we modify it and change it and do something different, I'm all up for a, for a thinking about that, but it takes important leaders other than myself to make sure that our schools are trying to do what we are having them try to do, right? And so I just want to make sure that we, and I don't think I heard that up here, but I was just a little bit nervous in the back. It's not like a, should we or shouldn't we have that person? We need that person, right? It's imperative, and I'm happy to sit down with any of you at any point and explain why. The modified role or the different role, sure, but there has to be additional leadership people in the school if we want to do the job that we're trying to do. Right, thank you.
So I have a couple, couple of comments, and I might think of a question. On that note there, I was just sort of elaborating, because I was sort of picking on you earlier, Mike, on this question of how you were going to identify, or how the team was going to identify any additional roles beyond the principal, in terms of leadership. And what I was picking on, and I, I'm probably at a couple of points in this conversation going to speak very bluntly, because I always say that every meeting, and usually I'm blunt, but I, sometimes I'm not. I'm excited, I, I'm naturally kind of polite. But, but the reason I'm saying I'm being blunt is just because the public has seen or received some level of the criticisms that are being put at the feet of the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, and the school committee, and then others' leaders in the district. But the reality is, there's a whole host of things that have been put out as accusations around what the motivations are of the district. And it's an interesting challenge, because when you sort of sort out the different facts and things, and different statements that you have, you have a combination of some things that may be true. So you have some lapped licenses, you have other people who were on waived licenses and things like that. And so as, as we look at this, this so-called DESI letter that was reported and received by the district, you know, DESI identified a number of things that they viewed as being practices that clearly needed to be improved, and outcomes that needed to be changed in terms of how we were managing that process, right? The challenge is, what we also have largely in the discussion, either that's occurring publicly, or that is being received voluminously by the school district, is also a lot of other things that may in fact have no basis in fact whatsoever. And so one of the ones I was picking on was the idea that if the district is thinking about how it should best organize its elementary schools, and what's the best way to meet the needs of children and support staff in those schools, that somehow that was going to be reverse engineered or gamed, because there was some effort to get around licensure rules or laws. And the message, and so I was asking that question, you could have answered it any way you wanted, if you'd wanted to say, that's exactly what we're doing, Eric, how clever are you to figure that out? You could have said that. But what I was really trying to do was, was have as much clarity and blunt talk as we can around some of these decisions and approaches, knowing also, by the way, that I think our, our district is in a challenging moment right now, because overall, as best I can ascertain from what I've heard, and similarly, I read all the letters we get, and all the outreach we get, we're at a point in which there's a real crisis in terms of morale in the district, and there are a lot of people who are deeply concerned. They're deeply concerned about whether they're valued, they're deeply concerned about whether they're going to be in a position in which every decision they make and every action they take is going to be publicly discussed and publicly debated in a way that most people would never put up with with their jobs. Now, there's a public dimension to this work that naturally requires it to be more public than it would otherwise, but the reality is, our district is made up of human beings. The complex organizations are made up of human beings. The entire point of the enterprise of this organization is try to enable childhood development and support children who, and families, who are trying to nurture a pathway for their kids, right? And so in that kind of environment, I'm just sort of calling out the fact that we have to be both, have fidelity to the law, fidelity to what would be considered best prudential practice, but we also have to have fidelity to each other, and to the community that we love and that we're dedicated to. And in fact, I would argue that while we're having fidelity to the law and fidelity to the best practice, and being developmental in that way, I would actually argue that if you, if you lose the spark and the thread of understanding, I think echoing something Principal Shea said a moment ago, Principal Shea said a moment ago, the core mission you have and the fact that this is an entity made up of human beings who all have to be able to center themselves, come to work, and provide an environment for each other, for the students and for the public in general, knowing that it's public and knowing that it's challenging, that we have to take care with that. We have to take tremendous care with that. And I'm saying that out loud now just simply because I don't want to walk down a path, I know we're talking about licensure right now, I'm going to focus in on that. I am amazingly uninterested in having this school committee in this district and this public conversation go down a profoundly destructive path. And so, the question is, what are the alternatives that lead us out of that destructive path but also adhere to core principles or core ideas or values that we have as a society at large legally, also within the community that we're working and the community that we're serving? And so, and so to me, a couple of things. And one, I was calling out this question of how you're structuring it because I really wanted to be incredibly blunt, that if you're, that if you're making decisions around the structure and leadership and the role of individuals within the elementary school, that you've already thought through the fact that this is in fact an intentional act around what's going to serve the best structure for the staff and for the kids, and that within that course, it goes without saying, it doesn't go without saying in the context of this conversation, but it goes without saying, which is why I was calling it out, that you're going to have fidelity to whatever the appropriate licensure rules as well as other professional development, other experiences that individuals bring to a job that make them outstanding leaders, outstanding contributors to the communities. That's why I was calling that out. Backing up for a second here, so we recently have a letter from DESI, there's been an engagement with them around licensure. You're responding to that letter. That letter is going to include a bunch of information in it, including the licensure status of all the administrators who would need to be licensed. It's going to clarify that, it's going to clarify, as mentioned earlier, biases and superintendent Cunningham, what happened with school spring. And then, as Mr. Demling pointed out, we're essentially going to be, along with whatever dialogue you have around them, what our practices are going forward, you're going to get a response from them back that is presumably going to lay out whether their concurrence with both the underlying facts as well as also, and I'm not saying it's an investigation, but I'm saying they're going to acknowledge what you tell them. So if they say, you say Mark Jackson's licensed, well, they told you Mark Jackson's licensed, probably going to nod their heads and say Mark Jackson's licensed, right? That's what I'm talking about, a lot of that. And then, two, whatever pathway they're going to identify going forward, that would be a good practice for us to adhere to going forward, that the administration, the district's going to do, they're going to sort of validate and ratify that, and that that's going to give us a framework, as mentioned earlier, about how we're going to be able to proceed. In addition, people may or may not recall, there was, we hear, an Office of Civil Rights complaint that was filed with the Department of Education. We in fact have not been notified about that or heard back from it, but I'm, I could say this later in the chairs update, but I'll say it now, that the responsibility of the committee is clearly to follow whatever path of follow-up oversight and due diligence that falls to us in our role on the school committee. So, for example, as Ms. Kaczynski said a moment ago, we have to, we, I mean, I would argue, I mean, I guess I'm agreeing with her, hey, I'm agreeing with you. We, as the committee, owe it to the public and owe it to ourselves and owe it to you to follow up sometime this fall, as we did last November, and hear a thorough presentation about where we are and review that. And I think that's important. Clearly, if we get back something from OCR or other kinds of investigatory responses or whatever they are, as we learn what we learn, the committee is going to have a responsibility to follow up based on what is sent to us and what is provided to us. That would be true of any situation in which if there were, if there were a complaint filed or some other sort of issue going on, the committee would engage in that. I bring that up and mention it because, again, it's sort of a fine point to put on the fact, and again, I say this publicly because everything's been so public. There are lots of things that have been thrown around as accusations. I'm going to just say, speaking for myself, I actually concur with the opinions that were said earlier, but I haven't seen any evidence in my interactions with the leadership to suggest that there is any validity to claims, that there was any direct bias or other motivation in terms of decisions that were made that would warrant a review of the decisions that have been made. If anything to the contrary comes forward, we would, we would deal with it as we need to. But I say this just because I think one of the challenges the committee has when we're getting so many things over the transom, as the old expression goes, or the email inbox as it is currently today, no one has transoms. My guess is no one even knows what a transom is, maybe some of you do. But anyways, that, that you can't respond to every statement that's made if there's no in fact any appropriate channel or avenue to review it appropriately under the law. That was why I would make a distinction that when I, and I again credit the assistant superintendent and superintendent, not only have you been working on the licensure issue since last fall, but on top of that, you got a letter from DESI, you're responding to a letter from DESI, where there are things in it you think you need to improve, you're doing so. That's responding appropriately, and the committee itself is also engaging appropriately in looking at that and asking questions and wanting to follow up later on. So I think the committee is exercising its appropriate role and judgment in this process. You were doing so as well. I will, I'll call out just the fact that in my mind, going on for a while, but the thing is also our next meeting's going to be about evaluation, this probably won't be on the agenda, and then all of a sudden we're in the summer, and so I'm really, I'm extraordinarily uncomfortable with the idea that we have this meeting and then all of a sudden it's like, you know, September or October, and people are like, where did this conversation go? So I'm laying it out, I'm welcoming if members of the committee want to do it further in a second as well, that one of the challenges of the way in which I think you did handle the professional development, professional licensure and practice work that was initiated last summer, is I think it's really appropriate in the context that we discussed earlier about staff morale and the overall morale of the district, that if you have questions around individuals who work in the district, I think it's entirely appropriate to handle it in a way in which you're directly engaging with those individuals and trying to resolve whatever you're finding that you need to deal with. In some cases, there are actually strict rules governing how you do that, but in this case, the idea that this is being handled in a way that I recognize for the public was not as public a discussion as it could be. My guess is, and you can answer the question if you wanted, but my guess is this was done this way precisely because you're talking about staff who are in the district and trying to find ways developmentally and appropriately to get them on course. Having said that, now that it, now that it is public, I think, you know, this is again an example of something where, where when I look at where we're going and what we're doing, the fact that you've engaged well, not just last July, but I'm saying right now, you're engaging well and appropriately around how you're doing the work should give people some confidence. What I'd also argue is the extent that we've been able to be transparent and we're also going to enable and facilitate future conversations where there's also transparency around these things. That's the only path forward we have. The only path forward we have is to do these things together and to be transparent, to identify best practices and laws where we can, to conduct our roles in ways in which there is appropriate oversight, but there's also, I think, an understanding of the organic nature of the enterprise that we're in, the human-centered nature of the enterprise that we're in. And so, you know, as we go forward, I encourage, especially, you know, we have retreats and retreat planning, I would encourage the committee to think about anything we can do that follows on from the licensure topic, but also the sort of spin-off of other things in which we think about, how can we structure and facilitate conversations that can enable us to have confidence and the public have confidence that we're ahead of these conversations as well as we can in the future? But I, you know, I thank you for your work. We look forward to responding and following up. And I really sincerely want us to do exactly what has been asked of us, is infidelity with these rules, these laws, these best practices. I want to get back to focusing on what we have been doing quite a bit over the last, at least while I've been on, before too, to be fair, although I don't mean it that way. At least, I'm seeing in my direct personal knowledge, of focusing a lot on a multitude of ways in which we can enhance the student experience and family engagement. That's my two cents. Or five cents. Is there anything else in the committee? Hiring process committee update.
So we, so we had a committee of many individuals, the staff at the ARPS district and the community, who joined together to review our current practices and to make recommendations for future practices. These are some of the members, and I'd like the current members who are here to stand up and join in because they are the ones who will be presenting this work or this So we have Lamika McGee, we have Deandre Hinson, and we have Andrea Battle, and they are going to present the rest of the slides.
Need a microphone, make sure you stand before a microphone, please.
So, the purpose of the committee, as mentioned, was to basically review our practices and to just make recommendations as to where we could do things better as a district.
So I just need a visual cue if you want me to fast forward a slide.
Yeah, I have a particular type, I don't know what's, is it right after this?
He's first.
So, our goal was to create a standing committee with core membership with a diverse group, is what we focused on throughout our entire process, and diverse not only in skin color and race and all those things, is that also roles as well. So, our thought process was having a core membership and for our different, different hiring processes, request members for each school, teachers, paras, clerical, food service, custodial, which is also represented into our monthly process, and that the membership of who those folks are are made public at the beginning of the year, and that individual, you know, hiring, you know, hirings, those are made more transparent, but having the broader group made public, we felt would ensure more trust. Also providing training for that broader group on implicit bias, social justice, other topics of that nature, and then also discuss going forward throughout the year as hiring processes go, either have resources or smaller trainings of some sort, just to make sure everybody's together and especially in a long year where hiring may happen in parts of the year that everyone's up to date about what we need to do. Also, in our discussion of the standing committee, we also thought about, just we all know, we thought about our big topics, where how many should be in there, you know, who should be included, confidentiality, and we thought we tackled it all throughout our month and during that.
So, one of the big difference when you look at this slide is the creation of the standing committee. Currently, we do not have a committee who is all ready to go out there and do the hiring or the screening, and they are not, we don't have people who are trained. So we didn't offer any training previous as to implicit bias or any of the things that Deandre mentioned. So, this committee is going to be important to have because one of the questions earlier, not in this meeting but in a previous meeting, people were saying that, or comment, was that they felt a lack, that there was a lack of transparency as to who was on the committee. When we have this now, that we're, and we're going to articulate to each school, each principal, everyone in the district, who the membership is. So let's say we're at Pelham School and we have, let's say, five people, they will know from the beginning who those five people are so that if there's a posting ever for that building, then they will know who may comprise the committee. So that's, that's a big difference, a big change that'll occur.
So, we also took a look at the search process and how we can find qualified applicants of color. And I would like to say that, you know, we had quite a bit of conversation around qualified. There is a narrative out there that you need a person of color or, you know, and that sometimes means looking for someone who may not have the qualifications. And oftentimes, you know, let me just be frank, we're overqualified. And so, the idea that we cannot find applicants of color, that narrative, we just have to get rid of it. So I just want to say that. And so, but we need to think outside of the box, you know, we need to look at some of these EPP programs. If you go on DESI, some of the information is right there. We know which EPPs are putting out most educators of color, and so we need to look at those and say, hey, what have you got? So, there's opportunity out there. We want to look at six state candidates to be invited for interviews. Principals should typically be part of the selection committee for their respective school, and the superintendent should be involved early in all principal searches, so that's one thing that we discussed. And advance all candidates that are deemed capable of the position. And then typically two or three move forward. And this is one thing that we looked at, if a, all finalists are rejected after a superintendent interview, that the committee is reconvened. Obviously, it's the superintendent's decision what he ultimately decides to do, but I think that reconvening will kind of help the search committee get an understanding, okay, how do we need to move forward? And so, we thought that should be part of the process.
So, no.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood you. Did I go too far?
Yeah, just the other one, go back. So, a change that this process brings up is that, as mentioned, typically two to three people are moved forward, and now with this process, anyone who is capable, that the committee is saying is capable and qualified to do the job, will be advanced. So we're not saying two or three will go for the next round or for the next forum, but whoever, whatever number, so if we have six candidates and we say four of them are qualified, then four of them will move forward to meet with the superintendent and to meet with the community forums that take place. And also, the early involvement of the superintendent in any of these searches for a principal or director is also a big change, whereas typically, currently, the superintendent comes in at the end, now he's way in the beginning, he's also in the middle, and he'll be at the end.
Can I ask a question, is that appropriate timing? I just want to make sure I understood the last comment, which was, if we have a failed search and we reconvene the committee, is that intended to be like a feedback mechanism to the committee and maybe that's a form where we didn't, the search committee maybe didn't understand the particular skills or the particular, you know, something that was being looked for in the candidates so that the next search, you know, that's, you know, asked about earlier or thought about, is that intended to be a feedback mechanism or did I read that into that comment and it's just a, you know, a regrouping?
Before I answer that, I'll ask Ms. McGee to answer, and then I'll just answer again or respond.
Yes, in a sense, it's meant to be a feedback mechanism, but honestly, from what I've seen with our search committees, they're highly competent. And so, I, I think that it gives opportunity for each side to kind of say, okay, this is, this is my position on this and these are the reasons why I made my decision, and for the search committee, you know, whatever points that they need to bring forward, to bring those points forward and come to some type of agreement. Even if they don't necessarily like the decision, they're in agreement that we're going to move forward with this decision, you know, or they're going to, we're going to move forward. And so, it gives, it gives opportunity for the search committee and the superintendent to kind of have a conversation, and then the superintendent ultimately makes a decision.
Thank you.
So with our current practice, the superintendent does not have to reconvene the committee to explain his decision, his decision is just what it is and it stands. His decision is just what it is and it stands. So this gives that opportunity, as Ms. McGee mentioned, for that conversation to take place. So there's a lot more that we talked about, such as criterias and many other things. But we also looked at how are we going to assess this process, right? So we're putting this, these things into place. We're saying we're trying to be consistent or we're working at being consistent across all the schools in the district. And we want to make sure that we are doing what we say we're doing. So at the end of each interview session or search, there will be evaluations that will go out to the committee members to just ask them for feedback on the process. Also, our committee, you saw the membership, when we have searches, there will be one person at least from that membership who will sit as a silent observer to then go back and say, okay, I noticed that we have been doing this or I noticed that this did not take place in this search. So let's make sure that we are being consistent in doing what we say. And then once again, we're going to always have places where we have to revise and change things. And where, right now, we're thinking that this may make sense. But once it's in practice, we realize that it can't happen or needs to be tweaked a bit. So we're going to always look for those revisions to take place. During admin week, I will be working with our committee members who will hopefully self-select to join me to train administrators and directors so that they know what we're looking for. And a good thing about the committee members is that they're one individual at least from every school except the high school. But we can always go back and train the high school members so that when there's a search in each school, there's a committee member who can look and say, yes, this is taking place correctly, or, excuse me, principal, whomever, this is how it should look according to the process that we've put in place. And also, communication is going to be sent out to all the staff so that those who are observing the process will know exactly what they should be seeing. So this is just a summary. At the beginning of the school year, a survey will be sent to all staff members just to find out for your building, what are you looking for in individuals who join your staff? Once that survey is sent out, if a position occurs or opens up in that building, we can use some of the information from that survey to then create the job description or tweak the current job description to basically put in the unique characteristics of the school and what the staff is looking for, for the school. Then, when that position is posted, the committee members are called to action, basically. They come together, they do any kind of retraining, any kind of conversations that need to take place. They will come together and have those conversations. As mentioned, this is a continual process. So we will consistently have conversations. And there'll be lots of communication around the process, whether it's with the search committee or with the community as to what we're looking for to happen with our district. Also, as mentioned, the superintendent will be earlier in the process, especially for the hiring of a principal or director. And then the other thing is that there's some positions that when we hire, we don't have them currently undertake a task. I know teachers go in and they do mock lessons. But now we're saying that every position that we hire for, there's a possibility of a task that that person will undertake. So let's say it's in food service, whether it's a general worker creating a menu or let's say it's a paraprofessional working with a group of students. They're in that room working with the students as part of their task so that we can get an idea of how they will do in their possible role or future role if they're hired. So that's also new, that every position will have a task. And then finally, I don't want us to lose sight of this, but, you know, at the end of the day, the superintendent, according to DESI, is the one who makes all the final decision. Any questions?
Yeah, so thank you for this. Very informative. I like the emphasis on increasing the search committee superintendent communication. Couple of implementation questions I don't think I quite understood. So the standing committee, you're talking about having one search committee for all positions that would be the same members? Is that right? Is that what a standing committee is?
There'll be committees standing in each school. And people will volunteer to be in them. And we're going to try to use the lottery, you know, the, what is it called?
Just the lottery.
It comes out that way. And there's a training for them. And what happens is people, the more people know, the better off they ask questions. And that's the whole idea. And also the more transparency because they're in, on the staff of the school in which they're going to hire. So that was the whole idea, the standing committee. So you don't have to grab people at the last minute, but you have people who are trained. And, you know, trained by the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, trained so that they know what they're looking for, they know what they're looking at, you know, and the people have certain requirements, basic requirements, you know. Only one of them is licensed, everything else, you know, what, you know, degree, whatever, what experience and that kind of thing. So, so that it's clear at the end of the process or the middle of it.
Thank you.
And there are also core members of the standing committee. So it may be someone from HR, it would be the director of family engagement, it would be the student services person. So the core members are listed there and then people from the other schools.
So I'm still not quite getting it. I'm sorry. So you have the core members that are maybe members of all the school standing committees. And you have staff, say, at Pelham that are on the Pelham Standing Committee. Does this also include community members? And if so, is it the same community member for every position for a year? Is that, I'm trying to understand where the community members come in. And one of my concerns is that, you know, sometimes you get great community members and they're awesome. Sometimes they're not so great. And I'm not going to talk about why, because I've been in a number of search committees and I totally respect the confidentiality of that process. But that can affect a number of positions. So I just, I'm trying to understand the logistics of how the community gets on those because they seem like pretty influential committees to be on.
So we're not asking for one community member from each school. So let's say, we'll use Pelham again. Let's say we send out the request for whomever is interested in joining the committee and we get five or 10 community members. Those community members, all 10 of them, if they're recommended and approved of, right, all 10 of them will be trained. And so let's say Pelham is hiring a teacher, one or two of them. Because typically, there's a number that the group has mentioned as to who would constitute a membership in each search process. So let's say there's one community member. So we have 10 to choose from, right? That list of 10 will go out to let everyone know who the possible 10 members would be. And then we'll choose one for this search today for the teacher. Let's say next week, we need to hire a food service worker. We still have 10 to choose from. So we can go back to that group of 10 and say, okay, one of you community members, because your schedule might change, right, as a community member. So we'll have one, another one, maybe, could be the same one. We have 10 to choose from who are trained.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Before a question, I would like to just to point out, we say new process and this process. I would say evolved probably the best word for it. You know, I think that the staff that we have in this community, I think, either being here a long time or brand new, I think, I guess, the previous process, for lack of a better term, has, you know, from those search processes and interviews, have given us great staff. However, I do think this is an evolution of what maybe should have been ongoing, ongoing over and over throughout the years to arrive at this point. And so, especially many of the ideas that we did have throughout the time we looked over it were derivative of the old process. But just using those foundations and saying, where can we improve on this, where can we improve on that? Does that still make sense here for the current environment? So I think this is probably more of an evolution of the process. For those who may be concerned that we're, you know, taking everything away and throwing it out the window, it's more just an evolution of what we already do. So I think, let's just put it out there, that's more of an evolution.
I appreciate the, I guess, creativity and dedication that's gone into this entire process of developing. I think a lot of these are really great ideas. I, you know, I have similar, I guess, concerns to the ones that Mr. Demling raised, just in terms of the logistics. But I'm sure you'll figure it out. I mean, I think that it's a good enough idea that you'll, you know, you'll come up with what you need to. The only thing I would ask is, probably just because I recently went through several rounds of union negotiations with our union staff, you know, and we arrived at different places with the contracts, which are all great places. But it strikes me that now if we're proposing a standing committee that consists of, you know, educators and others who will be regularly involved in additional work, just, we want to make sure that it's not somehow adding an extra burden, right, of time to their schedules. So, and, you know, in trying to be conscious of the fact that we heard back from a lot of educators about how stretched their times are. So it's just something to consider, you know, maybe there's another creative solution that gets put on top of it. Or maybe it's a simple conversation with, you know, the unions, I'm not sure. But I just want to make sure that we, you know, we're sort of going into this eyes wide open considering that we have made some staff cuts and that there have been some changes that have taken place because of budget reasons, that we're not adding another layer of burden on folks. It's one thing to have volunteers that come together, you know, every once in a while. It's another to have somebody, you know, a group of people that are constantly being called on. And I'm hoping that it's not constant because I'm hoping that our staff are retained and that they're happy and that we're not constantly hiring, right? But just, you know, again, something to just think about, you know, as we're moving forward. And I just wanted to note that I really like the idea of having a silent observer in meetings. You know, I had come from a background when I was working in graduate school on sort of conflict resolution. And, you know, the idea of having what they call the dove in the room is a really important concept of just somebody who observes and doesn't participate in any of the negotiations or any of the back and forth, but just someone who is, you know, quietly observing what's happening and able to provide some comments is just a really, you know, I think, mature and important role for, you know, for people to play because it's you taking that person out from the milieu of where they would normally be when they're doing something like this, you know, and hopefully capturing some really important data and sharing that back with the group. So I really like that idea. I also just want to say that I really like the idea of having the superintendent involved throughout the process and for a reconvening to happen afterwards, right? Because I feel like, you know, communication, again, is so critically important and understanding for, you know, for the community as well as the staff, where everyone is at every step of the way is also really important, right? And so, you know, when Ms. Cunningham provides that leadership of this is where we want to be, this is the kind of position that we're hiring, and then we have, you know, the search process that gets put into place. And then the superintendent is sort of at the tail end of all of that, it becomes really difficult to share that process with everybody and for it to make sense to everyone, right? And without there being any, you know, sort of hurt feelings or, you know, frustration or all of those different things. So hopefully, something like that, involving the superintendent more frequently and having people or a person who can kind of sit on the periphery and watch what's going on and provide some, you know, some feedback to everybody will be really beneficial to this, this search process for all of our staff moving forward. Oh, and one last thing that I just wanted to say, I'm sorry. Just to, you know, I think there was such great care taken in putting together this search process committee that I'm hopeful that if we were to create other committees or one standing committee or whatever the iteration ends up being, that the same amount of care gets put into that as well, right? And that we're selecting, you know, people based on diversity of perspectives and opinions and experience within the district so that we're not having sort of the same usual suspects making the same kinds of decisions.
This is the superintendent. The superintendent wanted to respond, but then after that, Ms. Bitts.
Oh, I just wanted to make a comment on something that you said where one of the things that we talked about was that when we have the superintendent join at the end, then it's our candidate that, well, yeah, our candidate that we're sending to the superintendent. But once he is there throughout the process, then it is collectively our candidate that we're moving forward through each step. So that was something that the committee mentioned, that we'd like to see that happen more often than us presenting someone to the superintendent.
Just very briefly, Ms. Cunningham has set that up for the current middle school interim principal search process. That, I mean, you know, all these are, things are happening, you know, to a certain extent concurrently, but that has been, that aspect as well as others. But that one in particular, because I can speak to it, has been set up already for the current process.
Well, I'd first just like to thank you all for putting in the time, especially at this really busy time of the school year. I know it's a big, big group of you and I just, you know, for those who aren't here as well, thank you very much. My question is just trying to get clarity on when certain pieces of this process come into play. So I understand the standing committee is going to be responsible for all of the potential hires that a school could have. Is that correct? So, because you mentioned like the food director, the teachers, paras. And then the piece about having the tasks involved, that's for all of the hiring. But obviously, I don't think the superintendent is involved in every single hiring. So that's just going to be assistant principals, directors. And so the other thing I was wondering, is the bit about bringing in everyone capable of doing a job to go on to as a finalist, could I get some clarity on that? So I guess my question is, is that only, again, for the assistant principal positions, the kind of more administrator, higher up administrative positions? Or is that also going to be true for positions where I'd assume there'd be a much bigger potential pool of candidates? Just because there are more people licensed as teachers out there than assistant principals, for example?
So I'll answer part of it by saying that this is an evolving, as Deandre mentioned, process, right? The superintendent involvement would mostly be for the directors and the principals. The principals are usually the ones who hire the assistant principals, deans, teachers and such. So the superintendent involvement in the hiring of a teacher is just when the principal makes the recommendation and the teacher is brought forward. Now, to say that we would hire everyone brought forward or everyone's going to move forward, not at the teacher level, no.
That's all, I wanted to make sure that we're not opening the door to just a huge amount of.
No, no, that's more at the, when we talk about, we looked at some of the failed searches. And we said, you know, there was one search where there was only one person left in the candidate pool that the committee wanted to bring forward. But then it was considered a failed search because there was only one person. Therefore, we're saying if there is one person, then it doesn't need to be a failed search.
I see.
So we can look at hiring or the superintendent appointing that one person. And we talked about a whole lot of other things to go with the possible hiring of that one person, such as surveys after a year to see how that person is doing. But we're looking at ways to reduce the possibility of having a failed search.
Okay, thank you.
Just have a quick question. So I agree with Ms. Ordonez, like there's so many wonderful ideas in here. And I guess I do have a couple of questions about like the screening committee composition and everything, but I'll try to sort of look that out. So what happens from here? Do you, do we look at this again or is this going to be implemented right now? Or how does this process work from here on?
So there are parts that will be implemented as early as tomorrow.
Okay, great.
Because we have a search taking place tomorrow. And then we will come back and discuss what took place. Maybe find places where we didn't think about something happening that took place, right? And then the training will take place in August. So there are people who were on the committees who have mentioned to their principals, oh, when you're doing your search now, these are the things you need to do. But to make sure it's consistent, we're training everyone in August. And then we're articulating that information to all staff at the beginning of the school year so that it's moving forward, we're making sure that this is happening.
Wonderful. So just a constant process of organic learning and development.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, yeah, I feel like I answered a lot better after all the clarifications.
Yeah, so, yeah, I feel like I answered a lot better after all the clarifying questions, so thank you. One thing I think to think about, as you kind of evolve the details, this notion of advancing all the capable candidates, I think there are some situations that could be a little problematic logistically. I'm just thinking of a couple of principal searches that I was involved in just as a member of the public, in which, in assistant principal searches, where the finalists are brought out to the community and they have like a night where they can meet the people at the school and they do a Q and A. And I remember it was, it was a lot to get out to those events, especially when you have kids, but you want the community engagement. I remember we had one search with two, and that felt like a lot, like two nights that we're setting aside everything and going and meeting. We had one with three, that felt like too much. I can't imagine what five or six or seven, they're just capable, so we advanced them as finalists candidates would be for those types of positions. So just something to think about in terms of like the logistics, you know, it's not , every position requires that level of public engagement at the very end, but some do. And I just wanted to comment briefly, because it was brought up, I'm glad that this committee has focused on and will continue to focus on how to increase the diversity of our workforce and being proactive about it. You know, I see one of the core problems, you know, because this theme of trying to diversify our workforce proactively touches a lot of the things we're talking about tonight, as one of, I think of it as an opportunity gap, that, you know, income inequality disproportionately affects people of color, therefore educational opportunity disproportionately affects people of color. Therefore, the number of graduates that we have from our institutions is disproportionate in that respect. And so it requires us not just saying, oh, we'd like a diverse workforce, we'll see whoever applies to us, we have to be proactive about recruitment. That's why recruitment is such a big point of that. So I know you're already on top of that, you understand those themes, and I just want to say I appreciate that being a core value of the search process committee.
So.
I just, one quick comment is, I think we mentioned it last time, too. I appreciate the amount of time the committee members put into this, and I just want to take the opportunity to at least thank a few of you in person. So I think it was very valuable work, and I appreciate the effort you guys put in.
Yeah, and I think, I think it's great. And one of the things I'll highlight that has been discussed earlier, I like the fact that by setting certain processes in place and doing them in a uniform way, but a uniform way that's backed by sort of a logic model of why you would set something up a certain way, you know, like having identified core members of a team for a standing committee, doing that by building, having it by function, as well as other kind of stakeholders, then also having training involved in it. I mean, so there's an expectation, I think, that, and then obviously built-in continuous improvement, sort of learning from it. But I just think that even if previously, in previous practices, there has been a general uniformity across search committees in the district, and my guess is there probably has been, there's been more in common, but how the search committees have been set up than not, I think calling out these features and then setting, instituting both sort of policies around it, but also then working in the functional practices, like the dove, as you were commenting, into that, into that work stream, into the work that's being done, I think will hopefully not only improve the quality of it, which I think should certainly happen, and it would for anything, right? Like anything we do, if we start building and institutionalizing it, doing continuous learning and training and stuff like that, you're going to prove anything somebody does by doing that. But also, I think you're going to build lots of confidence, both within, within the district members of the professional staff and then also publicly as well. And well, how does that work anyways? How did the decision happen? Who does this stuff anyways? So I just think there's a lot in it that's really good, and I think it shows the quality of the work that the process committee, all of you did, and everyone else who was involved in that did. Are there other comments before we move on?
Please, one more point.
Oh, sure.
So you had mentioned at the end of your discussion about what you liked and had thoughts about, about the, just not having the usual suspects in the room a lot. I think that, that phrase, or iteration of that phrase was brought many times throughout. And I do think that the reason why, not just our, the skeleton of the process, but also the process itself, was to reduce a lot of what we, when we discuss things, we hear a lot of, well, why did this happen in this one compared to what this happened, or why was that person, again, was that person? Or, you know, a lot of this trust, you know, in the internal group, a lot of trust in the grouping itself. I think that one of our, you know, one of our core things we got out of it was that we want to have a process, it's a working document, it's a working thing, that we hope it's, you know, as good as it is, strong results, but we are in no way thinking this is infallible in any way, as any process is. But also more involvement as, if it's, you know, you're up, because people talk and, you know, people talk a lot, and that if we have a, example, a lower membership of teachers one year who are volunteering because they may have seen a different process before and say, maybe not this year, and they see it happen, the next year they may have a different pool of teachers who volunteer, or a different, you know, pool of pair of educators who volunteer, just because of the confidence level and the invitation itself to the involvement may go up. And so I, my, you know, thought about this is that I think as it goes on, that as, you know, year by year by year, you may have similar people who have volunteered, but I don't think the usual suspect lines would be thrown out, you know, so easily without someone else saying, well, I was on that process, or I did that process, or this person's that process, and it really wasn't the usual suspects, there was someone who knew this person. Because even this committee, I would say this committee, for those, a lot who aren't here, this committee, we made a suit, food service people, pairs from different schools, teachers, former teachers, facilitated by the department administration, and so we had a lot of voices, perspectives, experiences that were brought out, you know, in the time that we had. But also, I think just from their involvement in the, in the committee is, was a good snapshot of what I feel the confidence level will be as people start to see more and more in this committee. So just to put your point out for the usual suspects. And also training, I think, will ensure a lot of the trust as well. You know, we do safety training for a lot of the staff here, right? And part of that is so everyone's on board and trusts the next person beside them, that they're going to do a logical and good job of what they're doing. And so I think for staff trust, knowing that the people who are in the room are trained and not just picked, or, you know, the person that they've never heard of before, or the person who thought they couldn't do this is trained, also gives us a sense of trust amongst the staff. So just want to put that out to your point.
Thank you very much.
Without further questions, we will move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
So approve clerical awards is the next item. Yes?
No, no, I'm sorry, I was going to introduce, but.
I'm trying to look for my paper on this. Do you have paper on this?
Yeah, it's in the packet. So you're looking, that's why.
Okay, thanks.
My hand went up.
That's why I was, I thought you were going to tell me where the paper was.
It could have been that as well.
It's in your packet, is the answer. You're introducing it now, or?
Yeah, so it's two separate votes, one for the region and one for Amherst. Every year, as per contract, we have clerical media awards, there's a, recommendations come from anyone in the organization, and then when, I guess, recommendations, and they're reviewed by Whistler Smollett and one school committee member, I'm trying to think who. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan, for the regional level. And I'll speak to it in superintendent update, but these were actually celebrated and awarded last night at an employee recognition event. But I think I can, maybe just because there's still some people who are here for an agenda item, I'll wait till they're perhaps done with their agenda item and give it a little more, longer description than I would now. But there's one motion for, just to be clear, because it's a joint meeting right now.
I've already figured this out.
Yes.
That's why I put the gavel between me and Anastasia Ordonez.
Collaboration.
Chair Ordonez is the most important point in there.
Yes.
So the first item is a regional motion, which I would entertain now.
I move to approve annual clerical awards in the amount of $500 each for Mary Ann Jean Yoc.
Gignac.
And, sorry?
Gignac.
Gignac, okay. And Linda Kirkpatrick.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion as read signify raising your hand, carries unanimously. Thank you.
And for Amherst, I'll take a motion.
I move to approve annual clerical awards in the amount of $500 each for Karen Buno and Beverly Jenks.
Great, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Nakajima. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Who?
Great, thank you.
I was so in favor that I got to walk around and.
Thank you very much.
You're on next.
So I think that concludes the business for the Amherst School Committee, and I will take another motion. Mr. Demling?
I move to adjourn the Amherst School Committee.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Okay, thank you very much, the meeting is adjourned.
Great, and so now we are on to approval of the minutes of May 22, 2018. Yes?
So I was wondering, with the chair and the committee's permission, if we could advance their regional library updates, since there's three staff members who are here to speak to that, and the hour is late and their next morning hour is quite early.
That's cool of me, but let's, in the future, let's, you and I work harder to not keep doing this at meetings.
Sorry.
And actually think about when staff are going to be presenting.
Yeah.
And just, like presumptively move them up the agenda.
I tried to cue you, but we're not, we're not doing a good job.
I don't want to cue it. I want to just actually move them up the agenda when it's going to be like this. Because otherwise, I always feel like I'm a jerk or something, like, like I'm trying to make them stay late or something, as chair, and I'm not.
I don't think anyone feels that way.
I'm happy to work with you to move them up the agenda, without any, no, any, any.
No objection.
I was going to say, no objection, without objection. So ordered, regional library update, right?
And there's a handout that was not in your packet, but was in front of you, it was on your, it was on the table. It has black and red writing on the front.
And just, obviously, I'm sure you will, but just introduce yourselves when you come to the microphone to speak. And, yeah, thank you so much. Thanks for your patience, too.
It's also field day tomorrow, and I'm on the staff. And it might be free. So as we have introduction, my name is Lanny Blackman, Lanny rhymes with Danny, and I am finishing up my first year as the librarian at Fort River Elementary School. And I'm here to kind of update you and celebrate, all of us, on the leadership that our libraries take and your leadership on supporting our school libraries across the region and the Amherst Public Schools. And I have with me here Leslie Lamison, who has been the librarian here at the high school, and is unfortunately retiring, but the good news is that we have Ella Stocker here, also, who is our final candidate for the position here. So we just wanted to, the packets that we gave to you ahead of time and have here give you kind of some snapshots of the libraries at all of our schools. And we, we know, and it seems that you know, too, that strong school libraries are essential for all of our students in terms of their learning. Just a few weeks ago, some of my sixth graders presented to Representative Goldstein, Solomon Goldstein Rose, on the importance of information literacy and the states need to get involved in curriculum around fake news. So our students know this, too. Do you want to give a little about what's going to happen or what we have here?
Well, I also just want to say, Lanny has taken a position on a statewide mass.
Lanny is now an executive director on the Massachusetts School Library Association Board, and so she's really pushing for this advocacy, which is why we're happy to sit here late at night. I want to say that recently I was interviewed for, about the library program, and this library program is very strong because of so many different components of this school. The fact that throughout the 10 years of massive budget cuts, you've continued to support school libraries and school librarians is.
Empower professionals.
Empower professionals is really a tribute to how committed you are. But the other pieces that make all of this work include a strong IS department, there, our libraries are so dependent on technology, our faculty who are so integrated into this library, all the library's programming. So you can walk in here on any given day and we might have to be full with three classes. So a lot of what we've given you is just a snapshot of all three levels of libraries and how much is going on behind the scenes. And it's not because of me or Lanny, and we'll introduce Ella in a moment, but it's because of all these different pieces that support the libraries, the library programming, and you, and so we want to say thank you. And it's not, it's hard, especially in the rural areas, for schools to hold on to strong libraries. And we here have made it happen, all of us. And so your students, our students, our children, thank all of you because they come out so much better for it.
I have a prop, I don't know if I should do that now. One second, one second. I just want to return to the legacy for just a moment. I've had the privilege to work with librarians across the district for many years, who, Janice Wilkenbryte, who you may know, Leslie Lamison, who's here, Eileen Donahue, Susan Walls. And, and we do have this strong legacy. And on that, I want to acknowledge that Leslie has recently received an award from our state association, the Massachusetts School Library Association, for her lifetime achievement, which she has spent her lifetime achievement in school libraries here at the high school. And her leadership has been on the school level as well as on the state level. And, and so that is indicative of your continued support. And so moving sort of to the future, the last page in the packet is from our National Association, which highlights the ways that administrators can partner with school libraries. And one of the reasons why we're here is because we are excellent collaborators, we're collaborating with you all the time, even if you don't know it. And so a lot of our work isn't visible, right, because we're collaborating. And so we want to make visible what you all are doing and what we're doing together. And this is, this document really is pushing us into the future with the new national standards that we have and highlighting ways that we can continue to work together. So on that, and I also want to do a little shout out for the page about the Amherst Public School Libraries, there's a link to a video of our students talking about what they learn. But, so the, beyond the numbers, right? But, so on that future note.
Oh, so Ella Stocker is also a 2004 graduate of Amherst High School, so strong libraries produce strong librarians. Very true. And our teachers seem very excited to have her coming home. And so I borrowed a little prop from Miss Hayden, one of our.
The microphone.
Closer to the microphone.
I borrowed a little prop from Miss Hayden. It's a relay baton, right? That's it, I think, right? Do you have anything else to say?
I can talk to them.
I just want to say I'm very excited to be rejoining the Amherst School Community. I went to Chutesbury Elementary School, and then the middle school and high school, and it has always been sort of my hope to come back to this area and to eventually make it back to the school in some way or another. I did not necessarily imagine, when I graduated from high school, that it would be in the role of librarian that I'd be returning, but I have so many wonderful memories of my learning experiences in this school, and they have, it's so shaped who I am as a person. And I'm really thrilled to be able to continue that legacy that started for me with Janice Wilkenbryte and that Leslie has continued in the library over the past 10 years, and that I will hopefully be able to continue for many, many years to come. So I look forward to working with all of you in the future, and, yeah, we're just, I'm very excited to be part of this really wonderful team of librarians who are, you know, all sort of really incredible professionals and have already taught me so much, and I've only been sort of officially on the hiring list for the past four weeks, so. It speaks a lot to how welcoming this community is and how welcoming this school and district is. So thank you all for your work in making that possible.
I just have one last thing to say, which is that, I'm not sure that this comes out through the numbers, but I think that one of our strengths as librarians across the district and one of the reasons.
and, um, one of the reasons why Ella is the final candidate is that, um, we are looking to create library users and information literate students out of all of our students. And so, we're particularly working towards those students who don't see themselves as readers or don't see themselves as belonging in our libraries for all of the different reasons that we've been discussing in terms of hiring processes and licensure. And so, um, so it's really great that we're all on the same team here.
I find it incredibly exciting to hear from you and I'm so glad that you're here tonight and that you stuck with it and also that, um, by sticking with it and then being so excited about your work, um, it's like my guess is if it were two hours earlier, you know, the, the decibel level and the excitement level would be even higher. And it's high, it's high enough as it is to be impressive, but also just, I mean, I, I, um, I'm obs, I've always been obsessed with libraries and since, I mean, I remember being, when I was a little kid being taught by, I, I learned of this place where actually you were allowed to go in and explore and find words and pictures and books and that they'd even let him, let you take them home and explore them. And I know that it's one of the most special ways that you can engage and, and, and touch children in, in ways that, that sometimes you're not able to do educationally. And there are different modes you can do that. And so, I think it's incredibly special, but also just seeing, having heard the, um, in-depth presentation some point in the last year on the high school library, um, knowing how absolutely exceptional it is, but then hearing, what I like about hearing about a community of librarians and collaboration is, um, you know, I would have a great pleasure if we went library by library and saw, um, presentations about what you're doing because I'm sure it's all exceptional. Um, but it was just deeply impressive in the ways in which you're thinking creatively about what 21st century learning is and then how to, how to think about how students engage with information, but also then how you can leverage technology in creative ways to improve the ability either to move through information, organize it and engage with it is just really exceptional. So, it's just, it's just wonderful, wonderful work. Mr. Dunleavy?
Yeah, um, so, yes, thank you, this is awesome. Um, my kids love libraries, so I've always been really, really into the concept. And I, I love, I love this, this, this guide here you have from the American Association of School Librarians. I love the idea that, that libraries can be and should be a central part of modern education, not just because we have a nostalgic idea and, and warm fuzzy when we think of somebody behind the desk that helps you find a book. And it's, and not just because, oh, we'll make everything digital now and just, it's just you sit at a computer. It's, um, the thing that really caught me about this summary is the idea of that you're empowering and fostering collaboration. Like when I think really big picture about what goes into, um, what resources and, and factors go into education working, money and budget is obviously a big factor, right? But teacher collaboration, when I read opinion pieces, when I read research, the ability for teachers to collaborate and for, for different students to collaborate to make those connections that you might not have even been aware of were possible is, is, is really important. And it can often be in a cost neutral way, right? So, if you have librarians that are in the thick of being able to do that skill and bring people together, that just, it just supercharges the education and I get, I get so excited when I see people who get that about libraries and, and are excited to do it, so thank you.
It's really exciting that you get that.
Other comments or questions?
Just that my kids miss Ms. Lanny at Lever Elementary School.
And my kids are quite thrilled to have you.
I'm going to visit on the 20th.
Superintendent?
I mean, you can, I was just going to make a closing comment, but you were about to say something.
Yeah, I was about to say superintendent.
Oh.
I was calling on you. I'm doing my job, dude, I'm facilitating it either.
No, I just want to thank the three of you for coming in tonight and I think to the point about how central libraries have been and are in our district, I think, uh, I think for any of you who could do, either because you're a parent or just come to visit the schools, our libraries are never empty. Um, you know, Mr. Nakajima and I had an opportunity, as you know, to, we had a, we had a meeting, uh, last week, uh, which was somewhat awkwardly timed to be in the Fort River Library because it was the beginning of the school day and I get distracted by children, right? That's probably a good thing in my role, right? But, um, but maybe too much, uh, and, you know, the whole walls thing is the challenge at the library at Fort River. But it was just amazing how many students were streaming through as I'm trying to focus on this meeting, picking up a, delivering a book. Can I help finding this book? And there was no class scheduled when we were there. It wasn't like, oh, there was a, a fifth grade class that came in for their, you know, quote unquote specialist time. It was just the routine, uh, level of traffic, uh, the good traffic that we like that happens. And that's true in all of our schools in the district. I mean, it's true certainly in this building where you have multiple classes and multiple individual students going on. And I think, um, they're not there because someone told them to go there. They're there because the libraries are a central place and how they think about the schools. So, I really just want to thank, uh, all of you for your work, past, present and future. Um, and, uh, I just appreciate for how meaningful it is, uh, for our students to have that experience as, as a routine part of their school day and, and it's really, um, I'm not sure and I think I'm glad they don't realize how privileged they are that not all communities have school libraries that are that central in the academic life of, of kid to 12 students and we do. So, my, just want to share my appreciation for that and for sticking it out till 10 o'clock.
It's been an honor actually to work for this school district and just know how supported we are as librarians, libraries and the support for our students. It's, it's, uh, it's a privilege. So, thank you for a.
Thank you.
Great run. I'll give you that every time. Thank you, good night.
Thanks, nice.
Good night.
Thanks for using your space every Tuesday as well.
So, the rest of it's us, so we can.
Can we take five minute break?
If you like.
Yes.
Five minute break, okay. No objections. Sorry. Something along the lines of apparently how LeBron James felt in some of these games and near the end of that series. It's like it's just the fourth quarter.
You have a much better team, much better team.
That's exactly very true.
I didn't know whether I should be insulted or.
Maybe it's like how Kevin Durant might feel.
I didn't mean I'm LeBron James. I meant sort of, I didn't mean that at all. I meant sort of like. I meant sort of generically, it's like, you know, he was gassed. You could tell.
He made it a little too obvious.
What?
All right, are we back? Are we all back?
We're almost all back.
Did Ron, um, not, did you?
What?
Ron Nino, did you know that, did, he was not coming tonight? Have you communicated with him?
I didn't know that, but, I mean, we knew it as he didn't arrive.
That's what. I wondered if he had communicated that in advance.
It became increasingly apparent as the evening went on.
Yeah, well, yeah. That was my question. How do you know? It's 10 o'clock. Just realized.
We are back to order. Approval of the minutes of May 22nd, 2018. Do we have a chance to take a look at this?
I'll move to approve the minutes of Tuesday, May 22nd. Yes, that's the right date, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
I, I was in attendance, not absent and I am listed in the, in attendance, but also in the absent column.
That would be one good edit. Oh, sorry.
Oh, do you need a paper copy since you're offline over there?
No, it's just getting logged in.
Okay.
Because it's not letting.
Yeah.
Okay.
You guys good?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Dunleavy?
A small typo, it references policy BDEH, it's actually policy BEDH. Beginning paragraph of the.
Yes.
Prior to public comment.
Yes, BEDH. Okay, anything else further? Yes?
Just a tiny typo at the bottom of, um, page three, I guess. Uh, paragraph F, accept gifts. There's two dollar signs in front of the.
There sure is.
Ten thousand.
That's a lot of money.
Anything further?
I also just noted, we have EFF. Oh.
Oh, here we go. Here we go. So presumably accept gifts, gifts should also be G.
Yes.
Okay. Well. Okay, anything else? Seeing nothing else, all those in favor of approving the minutes of May 22nd, 2018 as amended signify by raising your hand. Uh, any days, abstentions? One abstention from Kestenson. Uh, otherwise the minutes are approved. Okay. Do we have any subcommittee updates? None are required. Mr. Dunleavy?
Yes, uh, we have CPAC meeting. Um, talked about a lot of things, but one thing in particular to the region is we're evolving, how we want our student rep, uh, to be here in the process for that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, opinion was expressed that we should think about how to incorporate voice from Summit Academy. Um, so I don't know whether the superintendent is thinking about how to, or the chair or whatever, but just a bullet item on the agenda as we're going through the protocol. Um, different suggestions, maybe there's some way in which they work with the student council, maybe, um, there can be a Summit Academy at the rep, student rep at the CPAC meetings. This is always a school committee meeting there. Some different ideas that we just began the discussion about, but.
Nice.
Wanted to put that on the radar.
Great. Anything else in subcommittee? Yes?
There's, it's not exacting the subcommittees, but it's something related to a prior, uh, item which was reorganizing and I just wanted to raise that we didn't talk about Union 26, which is now that, um, I think Pelham and all the towns have done, have gone through. Pelham went through its, its votes, right, for its election.
We did, yeah, we reorganized.
Um, so we just have to, you know, reorganize the Union 26 as well.
Okay.
Um, but I think that's probably for a labor meeting.
Okay.
Okay. It has, it has to be on the agenda anyway.
Right.
Yeah, I think, um. Actually, I'll hold my comment. This is a regional meeting and, and I think.
Okay, so what, what we'll do is, that's a, put that on your list, we'll put that on our list.
I've got it on my list.
Maybe the chair of Union 26 will put that on her list.
Already there.
There we go. Uh, okay, so we're done with super, subcommittee update. Oh, actually, you know, with, with, with the exception, maybe this is supposed to be chair's report, that, um, we have a list of subcommittees. I think what we want to do is send out a, um, an email, Deb has sent out an email to a few folks asking them to respond in, via email with any preference for subcommittee assignments and to do so, um, prior to the 26th. Okay? Great. And, and again, if anyone wants to know about subcommittees, they can ask me, ask their colleagues, ask, uh, Deb Westmoreland. Anything you want. Uh, superintendent's update.
So, um, I have mostly, um, positive things, but actually going to start with a hard thing that was shared with the larger community. Um, so Ryan Moriarty, who's a high school graduate of the class of 2002 uh, and went to Crocker Farm in the middle school and is the son of two prominent educators in our dis, longtime educators in our district, passed away last weekend. Um, we've been providing significant amounts of support for, primarily for the staff members at the middle school and high school levels, but I just wondered if we could have a moment of silence um, to recognize a former graduate and someone who was part of our community and is passing. Thank you very much. So, um, a couple other items I want to share, and I know it's late, but, um, there's a lot of stuff going on this, this time of year and I just want to make sure the committee, um, hears that. It was referenced earlier about the high school graduation. I know many of you were able to come and, uh, what an enjoyable event that is. We did live stream it again this year. Uh, this year we had over 600 views because we get an analytics report, which is significantly more than last year. Um, and by the end of the week, the graduation, uh, the other advantage of live streaming is we have high quality HD video or something like that, Jerry was trying to explain to me what it is better than HD, um, that we'll have accessible for the larger community as well so that people can have that as a memento for their graduation and not the handheld kind of thing that perhaps some of us, uh, had experienced in, in, uh, in our families. Uh, but we'll have that out by the end of the week. If not for the glitch today, I think we would have had it done today. Power. Uh, Summit's graduation was on May 31st, a wonderfully personal, personal celebration. Thank you, Mr. Nakajima was able to come to his tail end and connect with families and students. And, um, just, you know, uh, for four graduates, it was not much different amount of time than for the high school. Um, but we got to, for those people who were able to attend, you knew the graduates at the end of that ceremony even if you'd never met them before and you also got a sense of the community that Summit has. Um, last night, we had our employee recognition event, we had 90, uh, people there. Um, so this is for the Clerical Media Award winners that were announced, uh, voted earlier. Uh, and then members, uh, years of service, uh, staff members across the districts, uh, 15, 20, 25 and 30. Uh, and a significant number of retirees this year, just the way it, it shook out, there was a lot of retirees. Wonderfully positive event, um, you know, uh, one of the benefits of having worked in the district a while is I know a lot of people pretty, pretty well and as those of you who are there heard and lots of personal stories to share. Uh, engagement and otherwise, um, but for another day in, in this public meeting. Um, but, uh, just really a wonderful time and something that we struggle to do often enough and well enough is, is recognize the incredible employees we have in the district and it's, it's wonderful to be able to do that in a formalized way. And, uh, Miss Westmoreland's not here, but, uh, as I said last night, she is by far the brains of the operation. So, I get up and, and do quite a bit of talking, but it only works because of Miss Westmoreland's organizing invitations, setting up and creating the. the event, and the retirees get, um, is beautiful, which we just had one tell me on, on, during the break, um, wonderful bowls that our students make as a memento of their, their work for the districts, um, we had all three districts represented. Um, we had website focus groups met yesterday, and so that feedback is being gathered, Mr. Figaro, who's here tonight, uh, met with those groups, and it's really incredibly helpful to get going for July first, particularly the district site, the, the school sites are going to be a little slower to come along, uh, over the summer, but, um, really, really helpful feedback around navigation, color scheme, uh, layout, um, so appreciate the community coming in for that. This Friday night, uh, there's a Cambodian mural unveiling, um, here at the high school, so this has been a community-wide effort, um, by community, not just the school community, but the larger, uh, commi-community in, in the, in, living locally, um, to work on this mural, and the unveiling's at six o'clock, uh, there's monks coming, I mean, lots of people in the community coming out for it, juxtaposed with the middle school socials, so it'll be a very interesting constellation of events, uh, happening all on this central corridor, uh, Friday, but anyone here is welcome at six o'clock, um, and I'll definitely be there, and it's family, you know, kids want to come, it's, it's certainly appropriate to have, uh, whoever wants to come to be here. Uh, the last thing I'll mention is, uh, a week ago today, I attended the, um, last RIAC meeting, the Racial Imbalance Advisory, um, Council, uh, and it was actually a pretty neat one because it was at, um, DESI in Malden, and in the meeting was the RIAC members, the Commissioner of Education, and two other senior DESI Associate Commissioners, um, and we really had four key areas of dialogue. One was a request we had to develop an Office of Equity and Diversity at DESI. There used to be one, there hasn't been for some time, and, you know, we, we had good active conversations with the commissioner, I won't, you know, it was a private meeting, so I'm not going to go further than that, uh, but I got a strong sense from the commissioner that he sees emphasizing equity and diversity at DESI as one of his priorities. I think that I feel comfortable sharing. The second was about closing the opportunity achievement gap for marginalized students, and where does that fit in the priority of, of the, uh, the organization? We talked, uh, which is kind of related to a topic here in some ways, uh, talked earlier, but enhance diversity in staffing, both, um, at SE, but also in the Commonwealth's public schools, and how could that be a partnership between local districts and statewide policy and procedure, uh, around that, and, uh, and the last thing was, um, about licensure, actually, so also related to a conversation. Um, over forty states use something called the Praxis to, which is a licensure test. We're one of, uh, relatively minority, small minority of states that have our own testing system called the MTEL. What, what we find here locally and what RIAC feels is that it's a barrier, uh, to, attracts teachers from other states, because the way the Praxis works is each state sets its own bar, um, so, you know, Louisiana might be two hundred and twenty, I'm making up these numbers, two hundred and twenty, and, uh, Connecticut might be two hundred and fourteen, but that way the, the reciprocity works much smoother, and Massachusetts is an additional barrier for, um, folks, and frankly, some of the waivers we apply for is directly because of this barrier. Um, so we had a good conversation with that, with the commissioner and their staff as well, um, not that we got to resolution, but you're trying to advocate, if we're serious about goal three, enhancing diversity, what are some current barriers that are getting in the way of that, both at SE and, and the districts? So we met for over an hour, um, it was highly productive, and, uh, our next meeting is in the fall in September, and we're actually going to host, which is nice, because it's a, it's a four ninety-five inward, uh, centric group, uh, which is not surprising given the population of the state, and, um, actually, SE staff is going to come out and meet with us again, uh, in September in Amherst, so if there's opportunities for school members to be connected to that, um, I will try to find that out, but, um, it was a nice way to end the year with the, the RIAC, which I find to be a highly productive and functional and, uh, group that I learn a tremendous math fun every time I'm with them. That's my update.
Any questions?
Afka, do you know when the underclass award ceremony for the high school is?
I do not.
Okay.
Off the top of my head, but I can talk to Mr. Jackson in the morning and let you know.
Thank you.
Great. Anything else? Okay, same here. Um, I think I said my report earlier, um, we've actually had, um, I would argue that we've had a lot of challenges in, um, organizing, one of the chair's jobs, organizing the agenda and organizing the agenda of the superintendent, because of the complexity of topics that have been raised before, um, us as a committee, uh, and so, um, and thinking about, actually another duty of the chair is speaking behalf of the committee, um, it, uh, it's been, it's been very, very challenging to do that, uh, in an, in an environment in which a lot of the things that have come up have been, um, kind of shotgunned all over the place, and I, I'm, I, I say that out loud just because, um, I'm, I welcome, uh, either in a meeting, future meeting, a retreat, or anything else, um, any ideas that we can have to continue to try to, I, I don't, I don't particularly think the committee's done anything wrong, or that I've done anything wrong on this, but I think, as I tried to echo earlier, or say earlier, and I'm echoing now, um, a lot of the work we're doing still ends up being evolutionary as a group, and we, or developmental as a group, and so I think things we can do, as we get to talking about retreat, to organize our work and structure it in ways that, um, you know, give us confidence, but also I think give the public confidence and transparency around how we're conducting, you know, oversight and policy development and other activities of the committee, I think are, are welcome. I've said, actually, I'm realizing now, looking back on it, when I, when I originally became chair, I started talking with, uh, Mike back before he was permanent superintendent, about looking at the calendar of the year and trying to see to identify topics that we should be covering, um, either, you know, we knowing the hot season of the budget, when you know there's going to be certain topics that are going to absorb all the agenda, how do we use September and October usefully, uh, or other months usefully, so that we can cover topics, um, that should be discussed publicly, should it get some sort of rigorous public display, or it, like the libraries, just even highlight things we're doing and give an opportunity for public conversation of them. So, I say that because it is related to structuring the agenda, but also I think it is both directly and indirectly, quite frankly, related to a question about how we organize our work in a way that, um, uh, if something comes up that's really challenging, um, the public even more clearly sees that, that whatever that topic is or challenge contextualized within a body of work that we can find ways to be very transparent about as a group. So, I throw that out, um, because, uh, as much, as pleased as I am to be chair again for you for another year, um, I found the last few weeks to be actually, um, very challenging in terms of figuring out how to organize our work effectively and represent that work, at least now I was doing so. Do you have an agenda?
It's a non sequitur, so I don't know if anyone had a response to that.
So, are you talking specifically about how to communicate to the public, how the school committee can communicate to the public in a more timely fashion? Are you talking generally on, like, what a lot is?
No, actually, I wasn't, I really wasn't that, I actually was talking about, um, you know, and this again is a good retreat topic, and I know that's on the agenda, is thinking about how we structure our work and structure, um, different responsibilities of the committee, but also different activities of the district, and look at the calendar and look at how we, like, like, uh, Kestenzi's request that sometime in the fall, we have on the agenda the topic of licensure, you could probably blow that out, I mean, you also mentioned diversity, you could blow out, blow out to an entire saying that we should have a meeting about HR topics, and in them we can structure a number of topics that we'd have in it. I think we already do a good job around budget, although that was intentional, right? We actually had a lot of meetings where we talked about, how should we structure our budget conversation, and so that one's a lot better than it used to be. And I think there are other things we can do like that, across the range of topics that come up as a district, and I'm not, I'm not trying to, just not to make a joke out of it, I'm not trying to eliminate the role of the chair in helping to develop the agenda by so heavily structuring our work that we know in June what we're going to talk about in November, but I do, I do actually think that it goes into the question of how the committee does, but also is seen as conducting its work in relationship to the work of the, of the administration and of the district, and we should, we should try to be, I think, increasingly intentional about that. So that's the answer to that.
So I just, I left one important thing out of the update, which is that, um, and we announced this last week, but I have an additional piece of information, so Sasha Palmer was hired as the new food service director, and we're very fortunate that she's able to start before July first, so that she has a fair bit of crossover time with Ryan Harb, um, because those are really big, important, that is a big, important job, and, um, my opinion, Ryan's done an outstanding, extending work this year, and so that there's, um, transition time for both of them as Ryan's exiting and Sasha's coming in, um, so I just wanted to update the committee on that. And I met with third graders at Fort River today who have lots to share about, uh, utensils and whether we should be throwing them out, and she, though, she's going to get a letter right away on her first day on the job.
Mr. Dry, is it Mr. Sullivan?
Um, I was just wondering, well, I'm going to give the mic right now, um, when we get a chance to meet, Ms. Palmer.
So, given that she's starting as soon as, as early as at some point next week, uh, we could try to figure whether that's the late June meeting, or whether that's coming back in the fall, um, I don't know, I don't know if she's working, I don't have all the details of exactly how much she's working in the month of June, I just know that she's making it work to have some crossover with Mr. Harb, um, but we can try to work on that.
Yeah, I just heard a lot of feedback from the community that they've heard the rumors, and so there's a lot of eagerness to hear what her ideas are, you know, so I think if one we can fit it in would be great.
Mr. Sullivan and then Ms. S.
So I just want to piggyback on Dr. Morris, um, when, before Mr. Harb started, we had one site for free lunch during the summertime, and then last year he increased it to four, and I had a conversation with him in late May, and even though he's leaving, that we're going to have ten sites for free lunch this year.
Awesome. We had a grant to support it.
Oh, you didn't have, I'm sorry, I was, read too much into eye contact, I'm like, okay. Um, yeah, and isn't there, isn't there a, a free breakfast thing that's being watched?
Uh, for our summer school programs, yeah, we, we typically, you know, in the past just had sort of dry cereal, things like that, but we're, we're making a real breakfast, uh, for the students who come to summer school programming.
Yeah, and Ryan, I don't know if you heard about this, Mr. Sullivan, but Ryan had, uh, I say the coolest idea, but I think, I don't know if it's totally unique, uh, because it's also federally funded, on how to, so probably it's totally unique, um, on how to, um, provide lunch for every student in their classroom, so when they come to school, they'd be provided.
Breakfast.
Oh, I said lunch, I'm sorry, I meant breakfast, I'm sorry, I meant breakfast. Yeah, it was, which is, I think, tremendous, and, uh, there's, there's a plan to start rolling that out, that we can hopefully hear about. So, what? Anything else? Uh, great. So, public comment, policy, and practice discussion, um, we should probably see how far we can get with that now, and what extent we want to identify this as a future topic. Miss, uh, yes?
I was thinking, um, we don't have a policy subcommittee right now, right? That's an agenda item, but I would think that that would be some of the first work, would be to review the policy and come back with a recommendation while, in the meantime, we do whatever it is we're going to do.
That sounds sensible.
And, just say, uh, because I was one of the ones, I don't know if other people asked for this agenda item, so I thi, I think, um, totally agree on, um, taking this to the, in light of the legal, um, Natick situation, um, re, looking at our own policy, but I think also, I mean, we, we had sort of intermittent conversations, and some of the things that we, that you instituted tonight are, um, practices around even existing policy that I think, um, were really productive. I don't know how others felt, but I, I thought the timer was really helpful, because people were very aware of, of their time and were respectful of that, and didn't put you in the hot seat of having to, um, sort of call out on the time, so I, um, and I, I do think that maybe if we are going to be readdressing the policy, that maybe more conversation around the practice would be better after we have, um, any evolved, uh, policy change.
Um, Kestenzen?
Maybe Ms. would.
I kept calling on her all the time, so I'd look in this direction, but I'm now going to call on you.
Um, first thing.
Yeah, I thought, I thought, um, what went particularly well about the public comment tonight was the fact that I think it was easier to adhere to the three-minute time limit because there was a perception that, um, we weren't making rulings, right, on what was being said, and I think that, um, went well. So my, so going forward, my question is, because, you know, I do, I do think it's important to have time limits so that we can get our business done, um, but it's also important to hear from the community. Um, I, one question I have, so I think it was definitely the right approach to take a more conservative, um, stance towards first amendment issues, um, I might like to hear a little bit more from a legal perspective about how those things mesh with privacy laws, because I don't know if the memo got into that too much, um, so, I mean, I think...
Shaking my head, no. I should say it out loud. No, it did not.
Um, my sense is that constitutional issues would take precedence, but I would like to maybe have a more fleshed-out understanding, so that might be something that this policies subcommittee would look into more, or...
Hey, can I just, one second, we're... So, um, the reason why I, why I was recommending to the committee taking, uh, more cautious, I think called prudential, more prudent approach, if I can use the synonym, um, was actually precisely because the, the injunction that was, um, handed down by Superior Court in Natick, uh, for Natick, and also the, the memo or the advice we got from Mark Terry, both of them were equally, in my sort, my, and not criticizing anyone, but in my mind, sort of maddeningly unhelpful in reasoning through why you, why you would have a decision that repeatedly prioritizes First Amendment or Massachusetts Constitution free speech rights, in, really absolutely, saying, look, if something's going to, you're not going to restrain someone from speaking, you're not going to interrupt them, you can't just sit there and make judgments about the content of someone's speech, and over and over again, the decision referred to that, and then at the end, sort of out of, out of nothing, it then said, well, because of privacy concerns, um, you can still restrain people from using names, and I read that and I thought to myself, that, I mean, I'm not a lawyer, but that, like, doesn't, considering everything else was extremely well explained, like, that, that isn't really good enough for me, especially when I think what it invites is, um, another lawsuit where someone says, hmm, I think I want to investigate or evaluate this point more thoroughly, and I just wasn't comfortable with that. So the answer is no, we didn't get a good explanation of it, and I'd, I'd love to get, I think it's part of the, part of the work of the policies subcommittee, I think it'd be great if they engaged with Mark Terry others further, to get more information. Um, Mr. Donnie is on, Mr. Dumbey?
Yeah, I mean, I think, uh, you know, I, I had been eager for this also to be on the agenda, and given the recent events, um, you know, I think as both Mr. Nakajima and, and previous chairs have experienced when, um, and, you know, I would say superintendent as well, and previous superintendents, when, uh, topics get really heated, it is difficult to figure out the right balance to keep between hearing people's frustration and, you know, and, and expressions of, of concern versus the sometimes, uh, you know, sort of what could appear, uh, accusations that are, that are not necessarily based on evidence, right? It's just, you know, sort of people saying what they've heard, not necessarily what they know to be true, and there's a lot of that, right? There's, you know, there's, people share information, various networks, you know, and, and so I do feel that there is a responsibility that we have to maintain a certain amount of, of, uh, not just free speech, but also safe space for staff and administrators and what have you, everyone that's working and, and being in this environment, so that you're not just being sort of excoriated publicly, and your name is, you know, is, is sort of being dragged through the mud, when we know that there's not any proof of that, right? Like, you know, and this has happened to various degrees and various ways, and so that's always a tension, I think, that exists, is that we want to allow for people to be able to express their opinions and express their frustrations and let us know what they're thinking, I want to hear that, but I also don't want to hear people making accusations and naming people when I, I don't know if what they're saying is true, and, and no one else is going to be able to pick that out from, you know, a YouTube video or, you know, a clip that appears in the paper, and so I feel like, you know, any conversation, whether it's the policy subcommittee and/or us having that conversation, that we have to find, we have to figure out what that balance is, you know, that said, and I said this before to the chair, I think that the Natick, uh, decision definitely muddies the waters a whole lot more, because, you know, it's, it, it is a court that is making a decision about a very specific case, and the details in that case are not exactly in alignment with our situation here, and I want to make sure that anyone that's still watching or anything like that, that this, this particular case has, you know, a different set of details that are different from ours, and may be judged for those details differently than the way that anything that we would ever, you know, experience here. Um, and that said, Natick is also sort of an initial decision, there's other, uh, cases that are wending their way through legal systems in other states, and we don't know what those findings will be in those different circuits and all of that, so there's a lot of stuff happening right now, and I think rightly so, it matches the zeitgeist of where we are in our society, where people are questioning things that we've sort of done by practice previously, wanting to know, is this right, is this just, you know, do we have the right answer, should we keep asking the question? I think we should keep asking the question. keep asking the question. But I want to make sure, again, that we are creating a safe space for people, because simultaneous to the need for the public to express their opinion, I also believe that we have, that our educators and administrators and staff have the right to come to a meeting and not be lambasted unfairly. And I have sat through specific meetings in the past couple of years where, you know, staff who were not even expected to be in public positions were publicly humiliated and attacked personally, and no one came to their defense. And I swore that I would never allow that to happen again. I don't think that that is our position to just sit back and allow something like that to happen in a public forum. It's not fair, it's not right, it's not just. And so I do want to make sure that any conversations that we have around these policies, take that into consideration and create a better environment for everybody, and that we can try to come up with some, you know, resolutions that account for the different perspectives, but that don't destroy people and, you know, have, and I also wanted to say too, and I know we're not at the retreat planning yet, but I do think that when we get to that conversation, when we get to that planning stage, I do want to have a conversation about how to bring in tools that help all of us sort of manage some of these difficult conversations better. Because there are trainers who specialize in that kind of thing, right? And it is a very stressful situation to be in. And, you know, people's perspectives and opinions about why that's stressful can vary, and there's accusations that have been lobbied against, you know, what those reasons might be. Regardless, they are difficult conversations, they're stressful conversations, they have a lasting impact on everyone. And so I think in order for us to be better public elected officials, we have to also have those tools to be able to manage those kinds of conversations and know what to do when faced with that kind of anger and charged environment. So anyway, I just, you know, wanted to say that, that I think it's, you know, really, really important that we, as we move forward, that we consider all these different pieces, and that the policy subcommittee, whoever they may be in the future, are not just looking at the policy, the letter of the law, you know, so to speak, but that they're also considering all these other aspects of it, right? And so I hope that the policy subcommittee can have conversations with superintendent, can have conversations with the school committee members at the degree possible, and with our attorneys, and, you know, do a little research on this. Not that they don't usually, but this, I feel, has a certain longevity and impact that carries beyond just a typical policy subcommittee, so.
Mr. Dunham?
So I would echo a lot of the themes that Mr. Don has brought up, in terms of us being in this zeitgeist where all of a sudden, all of our norms of civil behavior are all of a sudden up for question. Yeah, I mean, I agree with everybody that our public comment went better tonight. I think a lot of that is because people were more well-behaved, frankly, and didn't, even though they could have crossed the lines into paragraph three or six, defamatory abusive remarks or reference to name or position, they, for the most part, didn't. I do think the timer helped, although, just speaking from somebody who did a lot of public comment before I was on school committee, we have to find some way to make that timer look a lot less intimidating. I mean, it is funny, but it is pretty intimidating to go up here, especially in that kind of environment, do public comment, to have this massive timer, the thousandths of a second running down on you, does not help. So I'm sure that's a 20-minute Google search, we can find something for that. More the issue, though, I think, is some of the examples Mr. Don has brought up. And I guess I would remind, remind the committee that, you know, so we have a policy, we have things that are explicitly excluded in paragraph six about reference to name or position, and then we have a recent ruling that specifically supports that, and then we have our own attorney's interpretation of that ruling that specifically supports that. Now, I realize that that's not perfect, but that's the kind of state we're in. And so, while I have no problem with how we conservatively opened up the First Amendment book tonight, I don't feel any more settled in terms of how we should go forward. I think we kind of got away with how polite people were, relatively speaking. I think if somebody came in for three minutes and just personally attacked, humiliated a teacher who could not defend herself in in-depth, detailed, completely false manner, we would maybe feel a little differently. And so this is, no criticism, by the way, of the chair. I think I have a lot of empathy for, sympathy, I should say, because I'm not in that position, not empathy, for having to have a responsibility to make those rulings. So I have no problem with what we did tonight, but I do think that it is, it is, it is a big open question in terms of what we want to open ourselves up to.
You know, one thing, I'm sorry.
I just had a, so to me, there's a little bit of a difference in criticizing in public a teacher or a student or somebody in our district, that I would, you know, just from a professionalism perspective, want to protect that from occurring. I want employees to feel protected and, and welcome in this school and not be worried that a decision they make in a classroom will play itself out in, in a public meeting, right? I think that's a reasonable expectation, and I think the public in general would agree with, with that sort of level of constraint. I guess, you know, I think the sticky point always is when you get with a superintendent, right? So if you have a complaint about a teacher, and we've seen a few emails where parents are advocating for their children and we get pulled in, you know, we always direct them to, you need to, you know, follow this policy on how to, you know, how to file a complaint, please speak to the superintendent, you know, and for the most part, unless, you know, if they go through that whole process and are not felt that they're been heard, there is a way to come back to us. So I think all of that is really well played out, and I think if you can explain that to the public in advance, that, you know, these are the kind of situations for everybody's privacy should be handled in another way. I think the sticky point is always with the superintendent, right? Because the policy says, go through the wickets up to the superintendent with a complaint. But if your complaint is with the superintendent, it's much more challenging. And so I think what might be a benefit in addition to, you know, working on whatever language we settle on for this policy, is being really clear on when you have an issue with the superintendent or a decision that was made or something. What, what is the appropriate process? And maybe it's in public, but how can we develop a policy that allows that discussion to happen in a, in a constructive way where we can all move forward? And public, you know, the public has an opportunity to have their voice heard. And I think that's where the sticky wicket has always been. And I think our policy probably is not very informative to the public on, on what should happen.
I think that makes, I think that makes a lot of sense. I think it brings a lot of clarity. Because I think a lot of the issue is around how you complain about something, right? And people are being, you know, obviously, whenever we have people just coming up and saying what they care about, sort of generically, that isn't really the issue, right? The issue is when somebody has a complaint, and the more specific the complaint, or the more pointed the complaint, the more challenging it is. So I think, I think actually developing, this probably is a separate policy than actually the public comment policy. But elaborating or looking at more closely how we guide the public in submitting complaints of different sorts, including up to the level of the superintendent, and then how, are there more constructive ways that we could do, we could help facilitate that dialogue, especially when it's the level of the superintendent, I think would be probably very helpful for us to do. I also think we, and this is something that Ms. Kastenski was saying earlier, we just need to get a lot more clarity around how we're guided legally. I know, so there's two issues. One, one question to me, and I think it's a good one, is can we innovate or change how we engage in interacting with the public around their input? So to me, as when that, there could be things we could learn in terms of techniques and any number of things we can learn to improve through that. One, though, because also it could be literally changing the structure of how we receive that input. So the idea that we have, you know, a rather formal cattle call, whether it's a huge clock or, or smaller clock, and people have come up to a microphone, and they have three minutes, and they have the three minutes to talk, and it's early at the beginning of the meeting, and then boom, they're done, that's only one way to receive input. There are probably other ways we could think of, including that would have a public nature to it. So it's not just saying, you know, we could send an email that we're not, you're not sure anyone will ever read. I mean, there's probably different ways we should be looking at to structure public comment that I think would be helpful. But on the, on the legal side, I just feel personally like I need to get a lot more clarity around getting guidance. As I said, the letter from Mark Terry said, in the injunction, both certainly said you could prevent people from naming names or positions, but it provided absolutely no legal justification for why that was, why that was appropriate, or under what circumstances are appropriate. And that was such a flimsy justification for imposing that rule that it didn't, it doesn't make me comfortable now, but I'm saying it's not going to make me comfortable in September either, unless we get more information and guidance on that. And including, by the way, if, I'll stop in two seconds, particularly also, if there's, if, if in fact, once you dig into it, you in fact can legally justify and differentiate between different roles within the district, different categories of members of our community, different kinds of staff people, certainly students or families or whatever, I think any kind of guidance we can get on that is actually helpful. It's helpful for us, it's also helpful to the public, so that they can understand why we would impose limits on speech if we're doing. I, I mean, I agree fully that the fact that people are being potentially rude or abusive to the public wheel or, you know, our common wheel, is, is a bad thing. But unfortunately, you know, we all know, our laws aren't always structured based on ideal behavior, they're based on sort of minimum standards of what you can legally do. So anyways, Mr. Dunham.
I just agree with most of the comments that I've been hearing. One of the things that I, that struck me, both in reading the NADIC opinion, but also other previous opinions in other states, is this concept, not just of privacy and freedom of speech, but content neutral, and, and sort of position neutrality. And what, when it, our, our policy right now is really focused on negative and critical comments, and that's where our conversation is really focusing right now. But when we have that sort of statement, and we're, and we're devising our policy around negative comments, we have to be aware that we should be applying that same standard for positive statements, right? So when we talk about saying it's okay to praise individuals and praise things, our policy, because right now, our policy only prohibits criticism and naming individuals. But I, but I do feel that even if we continue on that path, we need to be very clear that it doesn't matter whether you're praising somebody or criticizing somebody, the naming of names and, and sort of airing of sort of more of those personal experiences is not appropriate in this, this kind of public situation, because that's putting us in the position of judging whether what they're saying, what the public is, is bringing to us is a complaint or a praise. And, and I think that's what we want to avoid.
So at a very base level, it's not as nearly as esteemed as those comments. About five minutes from now, we need to depart so that the custodians can clean up. Sorry for the...
Moving right along.
Yeah.
It's fine.
I was encouraged to be blunt earlier, so.
All right. So retreat planning, we've talked about a couple things that, I forget whether, I can't remember what we've talked about or whatever you tell, tell me you want to do. Go ahead.
I was going to suggest, maybe, you know, if, if you set a deadline, where we can set ourselves a deadline for submitting ideas for the retreat, because, you know, I know I've got a ton of stuff, I've sent a bunch of stuff on, but, you know, maybe just like saying, like, this is for the retreat, can we think about how we incorporate this?
I think ideally between now and the next meeting, we would, people would get in ideas or topics they want to cover. I was just, I would, the comment I was going to make is, I think Anastasia had the idea of having a facilitator come in, which is great for a lot of reasons. I mean, not just so I'm not facilitating, it's also good just because if they're really good, then they can facilitate, they can improve the quality of the conversation we have and the, and the capture of things. Spitzer?
I would also say it would be really helpful if we could get it on the calendar soon, just as all of us have vacations, childcare applications, all of that.
Yeah.
Actually, I don't know if a doodle is...
No, no, I really wanted to get a doodle pullout already. I, I thought we just said we wanted one. But can you, can you guys take that back to the office and make sure we get a doodle pullout?
And, and a request for topics. We'll do both.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think, a request for topics would fall under agenda structuring and would not be open meeting law prohibitive. Like, we could actually send an email to everybody to say, I was thinking of these topics.
You can. I think as long as you're really, I mean, again, I think you have, you have, you can't have two paragraphs after that explaining all the reasons why.
Why? Right, no why.
It has to literally just be the topics. Okay?
Can it be topics and desired outcome?
No.
No.
Nope.
No, I mean, like, I don't mean like a decision, it's a terminology that we use a lot at work, where we're saying like, why we're...
Oh, deliverables. What deliverables is you get out of something?
Exactly.
Yeah, I guess you get list deliverables. Sullivan, you?
No, I'll hold it till next time.
You just look like you had something on your mind.
I'm gonna, I'll save it for next time.
Okay.
My memory's not that good.
Anything else? Okay.
We have gifts.
We have gifts.
Oh, gifts, darn, there you go.
It's not in here, though.
It's a separate piece of paper that should have been in front of you.
I didn't get that one.
Yeah, well, somebody who has it in front of them, you want to start?
I'll move to accept the gifts as follows. Northampton Elks to support the 2018 high school scholarship in the amount of $500. Pelham Elementary PTO to support the 2018 high school scholarships in the amount of $500. Anonymous ARHS faculty and staff and citizens of Amherst to support 2018 Li Jun Scholarship in the amount of $2,560. Stop and Shop Rewards, $5,000 to the high school principal's discretion fund, and $6,500 to the high school PGO gift fund, for a total of $11,560.52. From, I guess that's from Stop and Shop. And then, so the grand total is $15,120.52.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moved and second, and any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor accepted any gifts as reds, an aye. It is approved unanimously. Thank you very much. Anyone have a further motion?
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
A second.
They moved and second, any first, no, no comments allowed. All those in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.
No comments, a letter adjourned.